Mr. Mayor, because it's his bond request. He has a five-minute presentation. After that, I would ask that the organizations from the school department have one representative get up and state their case, whether it be a proponent or an opponent. If there is another organization that would like to state their case for their organization, I would like one person to come up and speak for their organization. They will have two minutes each to speak. After that, if we wanted to be here all night, we could be. Anybody that wants to speak for two minutes, they may within five people. After that, I will ask for a raise of hands to show who is opposed, who is a proponent. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I give you for the first hearing on the remodeling of Harry Del Russo Stadium.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me one second. And I neglected to say this, I do have some bad news. We just got word that the father of Chief Cafarelli passed away, Judge Cafarelli. And we'd like everybody to stand for a moment of silence. May his soul rest in peace. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And obviously, I'm here as a proponent of this particular loan order. Let me just say at the outset that there are people that are here not to cause any problems, not to cause trouble, but to show their strong sense of support for the various loan orders that we have before the city council here tonight. So I would ask that through you, Mr. President, and the rest of the council, that they understand that they are not here to cause any trouble whatsoever, they're just exercising their rights as citizens to be here before all of you to show the support that they hope to gain from the city council. On this first particular loan order, I'm going to be extremely brief on it. You're all familiar with it. We've talked about it. I think almost individually, I've talked with each and every one of you about this particular loan order. It has to do with the refurbishing of the Harry Del Russo Stadium. The city was fortunate enough to be the recipient of a $2.72 million Gateway Parks grant that, as far as we were concerned as an administration, leads the way towards the much-long overdue refurbishing of these fields. As we know, we currently have a track that is not regulation. So as a result, for many, many years, for decades, our own track team has had to go and run their meets at away locations. That will change if this loan order is approved. We will be installing a regulation state-of-the-art track with state-of-the-art lighting, AstroTurf fields, that's going to accommodate not only the Papuaana program that has done so well over all these years in our high school football program, but also it will also accommodate soccer and the new lacrosse program that's being implemented now at the high schools. So it will truly be a multi-use field. And actually, it will even take on a further sense of purpose in that the track will be available to residents of this community who may want to go out and walk, you know, somewhere other than maybe around their neighborhoods or down on the beach. They will have the opportunity now to use that track as a place where they can walk. And so the way that I am looking at this and the way that our administration is looking at this is it's going to be a true community source of recreation for people of all ages. So it is my hope that the city council will fund the balance of this. There's no, we don't have to spend every nickel that we're looking to bond on this, but we are looking to have enough money to build the facility we want. We want this facility to last another 25, 35 years, you know, maybe even longer than that, so that, you know, so to allow us to get the maximum use out of this field, we're asking to, you know, we're asking for this loan order that's going to give us the ability to go out and purchase really what we believe will be state-of-the-art equipment and structures and AstroTurf and so on to make this really a facility that the entire community can be proud of. So with that, I would ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any other proponents? Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. President, Frank Stringi, Director of Planning and Community Development. Not to be redundant with the mayor said, but this really, truly is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. When I talk about a lifetime, the stadium was first constructed in 1935 under the WPA bill. And to a lot of credit of a lot of people, it's been kept afloat over the years by private donations, nonprofit groups, getting money together, keeping the field in decent shape, keeping the stands usable, maintaining the lighting. But it hasn't gone the full depth of reconstruction that it needs. So what the program really entails is complete demolition of the entire stadium. What you see there, there will be nothing left. We're looking at a brand-new fieldhouse that'll accommodate two large meeting rooms for both visiting and home teams. The Parks and Recreation Department will be able to use those meeting rooms for programs and meetings. They'll have new bathroom facilities in that fieldhouse. We'll have a new concession stand. We'll have a brand-new bleacher system with three-room press box, a 400-meter track, a brand-new artificial turf football field that'll accommodate not only football and soccer, but field hockey and lacrosse, two new basketball courts, two new tennis courts, completely new fencing system, decorative fencing system around the park that'll make it transparent to the community. It'll truly become the recreational complex the city deserves and needs. And I hope the city council supports this. $2.7 million will cover approximately 50% of the cost. And given what we're getting out of this program and what it's going to provide to the residents of the community, not only the new residents with the young children, but residents that have lived here for decades that'll use the facility for walking and for other purposes. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stringi. Any other proponents for the stadium? Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Paul Bauscher, 591 Washington Ave. I'm the president of Revere Papuaana, and I'm here to represent over 300 families in our program that use that field every week for football games. I don't have to go into the condition of it. I think everybody has been there. I think when we went there with the mayor to introduce the news that we are going to vote on the order here, I just want to say that whoever is in charge of passing this bill for the children of our community, they deserve to have a stadium that is safe, that is healthy, and that is proud to be part of our community. All the communities around us have better facilities. We had to bring in portable toilets this year for our games because of the unsafe conditions of those bathrooms, the bleachers and the clubhouse. So if you are in charge of passing this law, I really beg you to do that because the children of this community deserve that. Thank you.
Yeah, next, Michael.
Hi, I'm Michael Hinaosa, 37 Amelia Place, the Director of Parks and Recreation. So I had a little thing prepared, but everybody seems to be covering some of the stuff that I had written down. So we know the stadium is 80 years old, 80 years old. It's time for us to start competing with other communities such as Malden, Chelsea, Somerville, Everett. It's a place that we can allow our children to grow and to compete with those communities. When we're all looking for houses, it's not just a sports-related thing, it's more about community and where you decide to raise your children. I mean, it's the first thing that people look for is what are the facilities like? And an 80-year-old facility just isn't doing it for us. So I'm here as a proponent, and I hope you guys can make this happen. Thank you.
My name is Sean Hart. I'm the athletic director at the high school. And we can stand, you've heard the stats, and we know that the stadium's old, and we know that it's beaten, and we know that it needs an upgrade. I think the thing for me in the three years that I've been here is it's becoming more and more difficult to run activities and to bring other communities here. We've done a phenomenal upgrade at the fieldhouse at the high school, and now we're being asked if we will host games, if we will be part of other communities wanting to come to Revere. We have lost that with the stadium. We have no interest in anyone coming here to be part of what we do here other than a team that has to play here on a Friday night or has to play here any other time. We do not use the stadium at the high school level but for eight games in the fall, and we use it as a track facility, as a practice track facility in the spring. So in a great city that has some great traditions, we've lost the ability to use the diamond of our city in the athletic and in the community world. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Name and address for the record, please.
Kristen Trinulow, 543 Mountain Avenue. I am part of Revere Papuaana, but I'd like to speak to you today as a citizen. I've been here since my birth. Four years ago, my husband and I bought a home on Mountain Avenue. At this point in our life, like many in my generation, the decision to settle and raise a family has become a top priority. As a former athlete and cheerleading softball, basketball, and a coach of many successful cheerleading teams in the city, I can speak on behalf of how organized sports has affected my life. Revere provided the education through academics that made me a critical thinker. Most people will tell you they do not remember specific algorithms or literature, but through their education learn how to think differently and more productively. After my undergraduate degree, I obtained a job in my field of social work. After two years, I was approached to go into supervisory position. I attribute the skills that were acknowledged by my director to the years I spent on teams. Conflict resolution, the understanding of team dynamics, motivation to get the job done and done well, integrity and ambition are just a few examples of what organized sports offer. There is an education to be acknowledged and respected that happens on the field, the gym, or the mat. There is abundance of research to show the positive effects athletics has on a child and society. I won't go into that now, but I'd be happy to provide that research for you. I want to create a stronger Revere, a stronger economy, one with less crime, one that increases the values of our homes, one that families will consider moving to. Start with treating the children holistically. Give them a community, give the community a place that they can take pride in to go see their sports teams compete, and most importantly, build safe fields that our children can play on. I can only speak for myself and my willingness to contribute money and pay higher taxes, and I'm sure not everyone would agree with that. However, I implore you to start thinking differently, outside of the box. Use your academic education to be critical thinkers and your athletic education to work with one another to find a solution to make this project work. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other proponents? Any other proponents regarding the stadium? Last call, any other proponents? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Are there any opponents to the stadium, sir? You want us to speak? You want us to speak? You have two minutes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Rob Sulevich, 11 Barrett Street, Revere, Massachusetts. And, you know, I'm going to just say that I agree with what everybody said. The stadium is in tough shape. It's been in tough shape for a long time. But we're getting a grant from the state for $2.75 million. If we took that money and did what Everett did to their stadium, which is a new field, new bleachers, new concession stand, and a new fieldhouse, and a new track, they did it all for less than $2 million. That would leave another $750,000 to put into things like fixing up the tennis court area, the basketball area, and refurbishing Hill Park as it is today, only making it a legitimate park. So like the athletic director says, it is a jewel of our city, and these are the kinds of things that we ought to be developing, but not on the backs of old people and poor people who can't afford the taxes. There's no reason to bond this thing. You have the money to fix the park if that's really what you want to do. If you have another agenda, then you'll bond this for way more money than it's going to cost, and who knows what's going to happen from that point. But I'm not speaking against fixing up the stadium. The stadium does need to be fixed. It's the way we're going about it, which I totally disagree with, and I think you're adding undue financial burden on people who can least afford it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Are there any opponents? Any opponents to the stadium project? Last call, are there any opponents? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. I would ask the councilors, I know, again, we have six hearings tonight, and if you can keep your comments to the minimum, if you have any, we will be having additional meetings, subcommittee meetings, committee at a hall. We'll be meeting on this coming Wednesday here at the chamber. So if you can keep it a minimum, or zero, I would appreciate that very much. Counselor Patch.
I just want to, I think you said at the beginning that you would ask for hands, who's for and who's against from the people.
Sure.
Could you do that, please?
Sure, I could.
Yes, we will have an attendance list for those who want to be acknowledged as being opponents or proponents. But as of now, who is a proponent of this hearing? Raise your hands, please.
Could somebody take a look next door? I want to make sure that folks next door can be acknowledged, if you would. Michael, please. Anybody back there raising their hands as a proponent? Okay, thank you, sir. Any opposed to the stadium project that hasn't spoken?
One.
One, and there is one, two, three back here. Thank you very much. Thank you, counsel. With that, Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say at the outset that the mayor's proposal to redo the stadium is long overdue by any stretch of the imagination. I had occasion to work with the Recreation Department for 23 years, and it really troubled me every time I would get down there, and we would have different teams from different cities, and we had the one clubhouse upstairs. The showers weren't working, the toilet facilities were inadequate, to say the least. And with that said, I certainly will be supporting that particular bond authorization. I would hope, though, that while I will vote to support that authorization, I would hope that with the casino mitigation, that the mayor, and I know he's doing a fairly decent job out there, I don't have any figures or anything, I don't, none of us have that information yet, but I would hope that he would look to mitigation money to do that particular project and another project I have in mind. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will wholeheartedly be voting in favor of this for several reasons. One is the need. How overdue it is, I don't think people really know. I was on the board of Papuaana's for 12 years, some 10, 12 years ago, field director. You know, you ask coaches and families to go down, it starts on August 1st, five nights a week. We used to go down there for two hours a night, and then all day Sunday from 6:00 in the morning until probably 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night. The dedication for some of the coaches and what the parents put in volunteering and everything else is unbelievable. And to go to that field and have outside people come in when it's raining out, at halftime, you go in a corner, and that's where the coaches discuss things with you because you would not subject those kids into the locker rooms where they are now. And that's been, how many years ago? A lot of years ago. I can imagine what they're like now. The bathrooms during rainstorms will back up. It's so long overdue, it's unbelievable. I think if you paint the walls, they actually have to caulk them and straighten them out. You can't even paint them anymore with the graffitis. And it's not an official track field. I ran track in high school indoor/outdoor, in cross-country, and that field is not a legal quarter-mile field. You have to have your meets other cities. That's a disgrace. Why should be second-rate citizens anybody in the state? But the bottom line is, everybody says it comes down to the almighty dollar. So let's take this on its merits of its own. You know, and everybody out there, people ask you, what is it going to cost me as a homeowner? That's what they want to know. They don't want to play this politic game, be told you can't hold a sign when there's no law against you, can? They don't want that stuff. They don't want to come up here and take time out of their lives, they get better things to do with their kids. They leave that up to us. So you take the $2.7 million that we're going to bond on this that is not paid by the state, that we have to pay over 30 years. The average homeowner in Revere, and I checked it out today, is worth $300,000. That average homeless worth $300,000 would cost that taxpayer, someone like myself probably half on this council, $10.25 a year. A year. That is less than a dollar a month. There's less than 20 cents a week that you turn around and fish in your backseat of your car or front seat, you might find a 20 cents. So to say we can't afford it and you're putting this in the back of the taxpayers is totally ludicrous. Sometimes I wonder why we come up here and debate these things, you know, on its merits. Dollars don't lie. Numbers don't lie. They're facts and figures that don't lie. We can twist them up here and spin them any way you want. If you're for or against, you're going to speak differently. But the numbers, at the end of the day, do not lie. But I'm sick and tired of, I lived here all my life, 59 years, Band-Aid effect, Band-Aid effect, Band-Aid effect. We're going to do something, let's do it right. $2.7 million from the state. And let me tell you, that grant money was not easy to get. There's a lot of communities that fought for that money. We were lucky enough to get it. Let's put it to use. You know, I heard someone say Everett did this. I don't know what year Everett did that. And let me tell you something, going off a bond, people say, why go off a bond now? Why? Because bond rates are very low right now. People know you go mortgage a house, it's very low. That's not going to stay there. Three, four, five years, we don't have a crystal ball where it's going to be at. It could double or triple, and these costs could double or triple. You know, you have the opportunity to do these things, and we do. For $10 a year, I don't think any person in this room sitting home will take that away from the kids, seniors that want to walk that park in a safe environment with lights on. It's not just for the kids playing ball. That park, and a couple people alluded to it, and I'm glad they did, it's for everybody in this city, from seniors down to the little child that wants to go in there. But you know something? I think Superintendent Dakin says it will be another wow factor. I like that factor, living in this city.
Excuse me, counsel, that's, two minutes are up.
I thought you'd shut me up. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be supporting the bond issue. This is long overdue. I'm a lifelong resident of Revere. I lived here all my life. My father was born and brought up in Everett. He always used to talk about Everett, and I go down to Everett Memorial Stadium, they have a beautiful stadium. I said, why can't we have something like this? Now's the opportunity for us to vote and have a stadium like this and be able to compete with other cities. So I'll be supporting the bond issue. Thank you.
Counsel Quanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one concern. When we go to architectural design, please, please, design it so that the Revere side is on the sunny side of the field, not the cold side of the field. We get, we look over, we look over and we see our visitors nice and warm, basking in the sun, and we're on the other sideline, freezing. There's some injustice to that. So when we develop our clubhouse, let it be on the right-hand side of the field, and then we'll enjoy the quality like that our neighbors have in the other cities and towns. Thank you.
Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the mayor and his vision of changing Revere. We've done it with the schools so far, and it looks like tonight we're going to continue to do it. I actually played there in 1966, and I've had three sons that played Papuaana there, and it's just deplorable. It's well overdue, and it will go along good with the new school next to it. I kind of, you know, as people know, I originally was against, like, losing Hill Park because of a ballpark, but I've since agreed that that's the best site for the school. So now we'll have a nice new stadium where the kids can play. It's not all about education, it's about athletics, too. And I was always big on athletics, and I just think it's the right thing to do. We were fortunate enough to get the grant, and to do it right, we need the bond. So I'll be voting in favor of the bond. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Zamburro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be as brief as I can. I think that, I think we all know that the stadium is deplorable. It's a disgrace. It's a blight on the city. But I think we all got to look at the bigger picture. There's some intelligent comments made on both sides. I think one of the things we need to do is be very transparent about the estimates and show people what we're paying, what we're getting for our money. It's easy to say that, it's easy to say that we can build something for $2.5 million. I happen to know that it's not realistic to do what we need to do in that stadium for $2.5 million, and, but I think we should be putting out what our estimates are and what we plan to do so people understand more fully. But getting back to the bigger picture of the city, a lot of great things are happening in Revere. We've got a half-a-billion-dollar project going on Revere Beach. It started, it's in progress. We've got the new garage, the plaza deck, the bridge, private development signing up. Great, big-time developers are interested in the city of Revere. We've got a lot of great things happening. We're building five state-of-the-art schools. And to have a piece of crap, and I hate to be crude, but a piece-of-crap stadium just doesn't fit with the new vision of Revere. So I'm thrilled that we got the two, that we got half the cost of this stadium for a grant, and that was a very competitive grant. That wasn't an easy grant to get. We were lucky to get it, and this is, again, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So I will be fully supporting this bond for the stadium, and I think we really do have to look at this as the bigger part of the picture. This is just a piece of the new Revere with the schools, with the economic development.
Excuse me, counsel, your two minutes are up.
Thank you very much.
Madam Vice President, Janino.
Thank you. I have to say, some of my best memories at Revere High School were at that field on Friday nights, as I'm sure many of yours were, and I think that's something we're definitely in need of. And something that we haven't touched upon yet is if we have the kids going to these games and playing in them, they're not on the street on Friday nights and on the weekends and after school. So it's not only a matter of getting them involved in athletics, but the kids that aren't involved in athletics are going to be there, and they're going to be proud and watching them and doing something instructive with their time, which is, you know, really, really important in adolescents. Something else that's really important, too, is, you know, maybe putting facilities for other sports teams to practice there. I know when I was at Revere High, I was the captain of the golf team, and we had to drive to Sluggis every day. So maybe we can put a driving nut up there. Just kidding. But I think this will really come to light when we win a Thanksgiving game at this new stadium, so I look forward to being there for that. Thank you.
Counselor Haas.
Mr. President, I think it's great news that we received $2.7 million from the Commonwealth of Mass. And as was indicated earlier, grant money is very hard to come by of late. I noticed the Commonwealth of Mass has awarded various contracts, awards for the I noticed the Commonwealth of Mass has awarded various contracts, awards for the rehab of facilities such as this, but not to the magnitude of $2.7 million. They realize the importance of demolishing the stadium. As we all know, the walls there are absolutely in terrible condition. I think maybe one of the young kids out here can go out and push it over. It's becoming a safety factor, as we know. I played there in football in the 80s. I played at the high school baseball there. Well, I'm trying to disguise it, that's all. In the 60s, I was hoping that would just go over everyone's head, right? But again, we all know, when I was mayor, when I was mayor, we rehabbed the stands basically through the Trafoni Recreation Committee, which is very generous here. But looking at the number of people who actually use that facility, you know, Richie mentioned about 600-odd youngsters and their parents down the stadium, and my daughter's a cheerleader there, and I'll tell you, going up to Indover, and the only people there would be the cheerleading mothers, and you say, we were the boys' parents, et cetera. I'll be for it without question. I think it's greatly overdue, and again, to get the $2.7 million is a gift that we cannot say no. I do question, though, the $5.2 million as far as the overall cost, because I think that's somewhat a little high. So I'd like to get involved with that as we go on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel Riordan.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. As many of you know, I'm normally reticent about offering my opinion on things before I've had the full opportunity to get all the information. Fortunately, in this issue, I have been intimately involved in the portion of this issue that was involved with the school. As I was on the McKinley, now Hill School Building Committee, I've had the opportunity to review the architectural drawings ad infinitum. Been in discussions with the mayor about the grant program, and I would say, finally, thanks to the mayor bringing our, having an economic or financial summit on last Saturday, we spent over four hours going over these figures that we're talking about here, and we were able to determine that this is something the city can afford among the other bonding issues without having to put any additional burden beyond what would normally be asked for from the citizens of Revere. Make no mistake about it, those of you who are opposed to this, this is a bold initiative. It is bold, and when you do bold things, you have to be imaginative. You have to find a way to do them when you have an opportunity like this, to get $2.5 million from the city to provide what will be a state-of-the-art facility, what will be a facility, I'm sure, better than any facility that's been mentioned already. Everett, Chelsea, Somerville, Malden will pale compared to what this will be. And it will be right in the center of our town. We don't put it out in the sticks anyplace. It's going to be right downtown here where it deserves and where it belongs. I would like to say one more thing. We are asking for bonding here. We are not asking to spend the money. Obviously, there has been no solid figures as to what this is going to cost, but we have architects, we have a city planner who are estimating that it will be in that vicinity of $5 million. It may well be less, but we are asking for the bonding so we don't come up 10% short, 20% short. So we don't turn around and say, jeez, we've got this beautiful field, but we have to build another cinder block wall around it, okay?
Excuse me, counsel, could you finalize this?
I will. We want this facility to be the best it can be, and that's why we're requesting this bonding, and that's why, obviously, I will be in support of it. Thank you.
Counsel Arigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate the mayor in getting this grant. I think compared to the other communities that applied and got funding through the Parks Grant, we did really well, and that's, I think, a sign of the good job that you're doing. Obviously, I've had some questions about the rest of the bonds. This is one that I have the fewest questions about. I think we're getting a good amount of money back, and the city obviously needs it. It's going to be a huge improvement, no matter what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your brief remarks and keeping it short as much as possible. And I just want to add my two cents, and I've been involved with Revere High School football since 1963. So I've seen that field go up and down and lower and lower and lower. I remember the, I was with Pup Warner in 1968 as their coach, one of their coaches, and I remember the days of Jimmy Delgazo, Billy Santolo, John Festa, thank you, John, Joe Festa, and the O'Donnys of Revere High School football. I've seen the days, and I've seen that field go down. I think once in the last 30 years, we had new turf put on, and we thought that was good. But I look forward to this. I think this is one of the major, major sporting actions we're going to take in the city, and I'm going to be proud of it when it's finished. So with that, I want to close this portion, this hearing, and thank everybody for their comments.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered on--
Mr. President. Counsel Penta.
Eleven counselors spoke very in favor of this. Is there reason to hold this up for another two or three weeks? Can we vote this tonight? I asked for a roll call on it. It's not debatable.
And counsel, that would be my call, whether it's not debatable. No, it's my call whether to accept it, okay? But we will, asking for a roll call on the bond issue for the stadium.
Roll call on the bond issue for the Harry Delarussos Stadium in the amount of $5.5 million. Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guevanaso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas. Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the bond issue has been approved.
Counsel-- Counsel Haas.
Thank you.
Counsel Haas.
At this time, I'd like a suspension of the rules.
Suspension of rules, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered. Suspension of rules to--
Not just--
reconsideration-- I'm sorry, had a blank there. Reconsideration that it not prevail. All in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered. Done deal. Thank you. Next item.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered on the proposed bond order to pay the cost of remodeling the current McKinley School in the amount of $2.5 million.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This happens to be one loan order that seems to have created most of the skepticism among city councilors as to whether or not it's necessary. And I want to let you know right now that the reason that that $2.5 million is included in this particular package is because that's exactly what it is. It's a financial package that I wanted to put before the city council that encompasses the entire vision of what we're looking to do. Ultimately, once we build that new McKinley School, we want to maintain the asset of the old McKinley School so that we will have the utility of the building, we'll have a building that I believe at bare minimum is worth probably $5 or $6 million, and we could actually even look into going out and potentially leasing out space so that would actually make money for the city. The only way we're going to do that, though, is if we make it handicap accessible and put some money into the building. Now, that money, just again, for the edification of the council who are, you know, certainly for the councilors who weren't able to make the summit, that bond is going to be paid in 100% by school department money. Now, people have said, well, that's really our money. Well, here's the facts. The city has got to fund the school budget at a minimum of net school spending. That figure is not going to change. We are going to still continue to fund that school at net school spending. The difference is going to be that the superintendent, with his wherewithal, is going to have to somehow come up with money to pay that bond. Now, the reason that he has agreed to do this is because, as we all know, we're building new schools. The capacity has increased, obviously, exponentially for what we had to do five, 10, 15 years ago. So as a result, the high school now has been squeezed to a point where the superintendent's office has to get out of there. So whether or not they go to the old McKinley School or to an office building somewhere in the city, they're going to have to pay rent. And why not pay rent right back to the taxpayers of the city of Revere by putting the money into a city-owned building? So that was really the logic behind asking for this, you know, for this $2.5 million loan order. You should also know that just because you would vote to approve it does not mean we're going to go out and spend it tomorrow. We absolutely would not. You know, there is no intention on behalf of the city to spend that money until the McKinley School vacates, goes over, occupies the new school, and then, at that point, we can start to undergo these reconstruction and refurbishing efforts. Again, this was put before you as part of an overall financial package that we put together that we thought made sense. If the city council doesn't want to give us the authority to go forward with it, just to, you know, to vote to approve this authorization, well, then, the only difference is, at some point in time, we'll have to come back and ask you for it. But, you know, who knows? Who knows at that point in time what the city council makeup will be? Who knows what the, you know? So right now, we're just trying to get everything that we possibly can approved so the city can move forward in a more fluid and positive way. You know, it gives us the ability to plan ahead so that now the school department doesn't have to start scrambling at the 11th hour and say, hey, you know, where do we go now? Or what, you know? Because obviously, they're going to have to be in compliance if they move their offices wherever they have to go to occupy, and that's going to be at least 10,000 square feet that they're going to need. So again, it's $2.5 million. We are not going to go out and purchase those bonds or sell those bonds anytime soon. We are, we are just asking for the authorization to do so. And again, not to be redundant, but this will come from the school budget. It is not going to be taxpayer-funded. So it'll be taxpayer-funded indirectly because it will come, but it will not come, it will not affect our tax levy one bit. It'll come back on our Schedule 19. So with that, I don't, I don't expect you're going to see 42 proponents come up behind me because it's kind of inside baseball here, but the bottom line is, you know, for the purposes of what we're looking for, Dr. Dakin and myself, and the future of, you know, trying to make it work at the high school, you know, so that teachers aren't teaching out in the hallways anymore, you know, this is very, very critical to us, you know, for the, you know, for the future as people leave the elementary and middle school areas and enter the high school, that they have as good of an experience as we possibly can give them. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any other proponents? Name and address for the record. You have two minutes, sir.
Paul Dakin, Superintendent of Schools. This proposal, above all others, as far as the taxpayer goes, has absolutely no cost on the taxpayer because the schools are funded as set by the state. No matter what, we have to spend that much money. The city and state give us money, that's how much they give us, that's what we spend. What we will have to do soon is go back to the 80s when the school department was crowded and they occupied a building right over across the street, the old bank that's now the pet store, the vets. The school department was in there. I think some of you remember that. As a cost-saving measure, because they had to use a piece of their budget to get that building, as a cost-saving measure in the 80s when things were tight and room was available, they moved the superintendent's office into the high school. Smart idea, saved money. Well, right now, we need that space at the high school, so we have to go back to where it was before and rent space somewhere. I don't want to pay a landlord, I want to pay the city. So the money we would have to spend every month renting, which is school money, instead would go to that bond. It's money we already have accounted for, it's money you will have to allocate by state statute, and the state will give us. It's a no-brainer to us for the school department to put money back into the system instead of putting it in for a rent somewhere else. To me, this may be the simplest of all because it doesn't impact the taxpayer. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Anybody would like to speak in favor? Anybody in the back room want to come out and speak? Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Hearing none, I will close that portion of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing none, I will close that portion of the hearing. Counselors, Counselor Janino, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think there are a couple of things that the mayor said that are really important in this matter. First of all, he mentioned handicap accessibility. There should not be one public building in the city that should not be handicap accessible. That's huge. It's unacceptable, and that's something that absolutely needs to be fixed in any public building in the city of Revere. So that caught me off guard. And second of all, was a matter of space in the high school. I can tell you, from leaving high school a few years ago, it's crowded. You know, when there weren't teachers, students are in the hallway, literally, in front of the auditorium, being monitored. So it's absolutely unacceptable. Classes are too crowded, and we need space in that building. It's tough. And, you know, studying education, you need small classroom sizes, you need space for kids to learn, kids need to move around to learn, they can't be sitting in a seat all day. So I think that this is really important, just for those two matters alone. Thank you very much.
Counsel Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I will return to our financial summit of the Saturday and make the point that we specifically had our city treasurer, chief financial officer up here, and he was specifically asked whether, among the proposals, this was a good idea, whether this was something that the city could spend without having any deleterious effect down the road. And he wholeheartedly supported it, as I recall, and I think he would say that again here this evening. He is our expert on financial matters. I have to defer to him. He has not let us down in the past, and I don't think there's any reason to think that he would on this occasion either. But more significantly, I think, is the superintendent's explanation of the fact that he is going to need more space. It only, it only stands to reason that as we've built bigger, larger schools, and we're about to decide this evening whether we will be building a larger school, and I certainly hope and expect that we will, we have to obviously have a bigger high school, or at least more room in our high school to accommodate that. We have now the superintendent's office in that high school. It's taking up valuable education space. This is relative, and I hate to use the term no-brainer, I know the superintendent did it, especially in education matters, you don't like to use that term, I wouldn't think. But nonetheless, I think metaphorically, it's accurate. We definitely can do this, and we can do it without having to, maybe perhaps not even having any burden on the taxpayers. I mean, we do realize that a large portion of what we spend on our schools is reimbursed by the state, and I certainly trust that the superintendent can find a way to make the state actually pay the rent, and that would be ideal.
Excuse me, counsel, your two minutes are--
I was not originally, I was a little on the fence with this issue. When I got the explanation, I'm wholeheartedly in support of it, as I am now. Thank you.
Counsel Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be quick. I think both speakers just before me, the superintendent and the ward four counsel, is a no-brainer, I'll say it. Because like I said, once again, I get to answer the taxpayer in the coffee shop, and when they ask you, what is it going to cost me? Well, if you own a $300,000 home, it's going to cost you nothing. Matter of fact, you might make money as a taxpayer, your taxes may, possibly in some day, we could say, go lower because we're going to make money off that school. The mayor said even to rent more space, we're going to make money. Now, the argument here is, do we have to bond it now? Can we wait two or three years to bond it? Can we wait two or three years to bond it? That's, that's legitimate argument. But I don't want to put anybody in a spot to call the treasurer up here, the financial director, but when you go to your capital programs and stuff like that, you go to a bank and you, and you, you go for your bond authorizations, and basically, what is the city worth? The city's worth this building, and what buildings you have, and there's actually a, a, a number on that. So to say we have an extra building over here when you're going for the bonds, worth probably five, you put the $2 million, probably worth $7.5 million, that's favorable to the city's bond rate. So you're going to save money on the bond money. So is it smart to bond it now? Yeah, you're going in, in a, as a package, there's no question. And, like I said, no one has a crystal ball here. The rates have never been so low for bonds as now. Everybody knows that. So, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this, and then, once again, I will say it's a no-brainer. To the taxpayer, zero, positive $7 million building that we could turn around and sell, whatever we want with it. At least it's in our hands. If that building gets out of our hands, and somebody asks me, is it a school building or is it a city? It's 100% city-owned building. Not a school building after they vacate to go to the McKinley School. So that will be in the city's hands, we have control of it. You know, a lot of these buildings we give up, look at 250 Broadway, you wouldn't want another one there. I'm not saying that would go, that we'd let it, allow it to go there, but some things are a matter of right, too, so, and who knows, you know, what, what the future brings. So I'm all in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to say at the outset, in the past 11 years, I voted for 13 bond issues relative to the school department. I voted for four brand-new schools, roof replacements, mediation in the Beachfront School, several other things. I intend to vote for a new McKinley School. I made that commit- I made that commitment 12 years ago, and I live by my commitments. To vote against the McKinley School would be going against my conscience, no matter how many people are up here tonight. However, when we voted the other schools, I asked Dr. Dakin if growth had been built in to the plans for those schools. He assured me it was. I think it was 5% or something at that time. And I know he doesn't have a crystal ball, none of us do. To take that McKinley School now, when we don't even, there're going to be kids going there for at least two more years. To take that now and make plans to turn that into office space? Education doesn't start in an office, it starts in a school. And based on, based on the estimates we've made with regard to schools in the past 10 or 11 years, where we had to cut the Parryville School down by 50 seats, we didn't build the Romney Marsh large enough, who's to say that two years from now or three years from now, we may be shot 200 or 300 seats? So why are we such, in a rush to judgment, to build offices in that building? Mayor Rizzo's doing mitigation now with Suffolk Downs. It's all finished?
Excuse me, counsel, we're not, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I do not want to go there. I, I do not want to go there. I do not want to go there, Mr. Mayor. We all do respect-
But I don't want the public to think that we're tossing the kids out to build offices. That's unfair.
Listen, you, we, we have our, we're going to have our digital meetings, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, please.
After, after the kids go to the new McKinley, that's when we would renovate.
Mr. Mayor, we're not here for questions and answers.
That's when we should be going for the bond issue, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor, Counselor Powers, your time is up.
Mr. President.
Mr. Counselor, you had your two minutes. You had your two minutes, like everybody else here.
Just one more, one more statement.
Counselor, you're already up, you're already up to two minutes and 45 seconds.
I was the one that urged Dr. Dakin to build the Parryville School and the McKinley School before the Romney Marsh Academy.
Counselor, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Correggio.
Uh, thank you very much. I was in the middle on this one, but listen to testimony from the mayor and Paul Dakin, the school department will absorb the cost. And the other thing is, we've got to think of the children. Uh, when that new school is built, we want the children to be comfortable, we don't want them to be upset. So they can remain in that same building, receiving education while the other building is being built. And if the school department is absorbing the, the cost, we're going to need the offices, whether it's today or tomorrow. Again, I was in the middle of it, and when I was on the school committee, we used to meet here, and we used to meet across the street, that building which the city bought for $60,000 and they sold it. So I will support the recommendation from the mayor and the superintendent. I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Counselor Zambudo.
Now, thank you, Mr. President. You know, we, we're going to have some tough votes up here tonight. This bond has 100% funding source. The school has an 80% funding source. The stadium has a 50% funding source. This is an easy one. This is, this is one that's going to be paid for. But I do want to ask our Chief Financial Officer one question-
Excuse me, counsel, we're not doing questions and answers tonight, that's not what this is all about. This is a public hearing.
Okay, so, so I'll put this out-
If you, when we have our meeting, we'll discuss it.
I'll make this part of my statement, if that's okay with you, Mr. President.
Absolutely, counsel.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm, I'm wondering if, uh, we, we authorized these bonds tonight, can we lock rates in? I think that's an important question. Are these ra, you know, we're talking about that the rates are at, at their lowest right now. We're talking about bonding, you know, a lot of money here. I just wanted to ask that simple question, but I'll ask it at another forum, but I think it's a pertinent question. But certainly, I, I support this bond for the renovation of that school whenever it takes place after they move into the new school because it does have 100% funding source, and I don't have to ask, I don't have to look a taxpayer in the eye and tell them they're going to spend any money on it. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Patch.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, uh, I wanted, we had, as people know, we had a financial summit meeting Saturday that we went over all these bonds, uh, all the old, the old bonds we have, and, um, I just want to say that the, uh, we were told that the whole package of bonds here that these, uh, that we're having the public hearings on tonight, uh, is keeping us under the 2.5 override. Um, now, I just want to mention, I mentioned, I mentioned it Saturday that I have a niece that raises a family in, in Hanover, and, um, they had to do, uh, we getting, uh, we're getting 80% back from the state for the new McKinley School. They unfortunately got, I believe their, their split was 40-60. But they had to do, they had to do an override. And they, every year, she has to pay $500 extra on her tax bill, uh, until, uh, until the school is paid for. So, it, I think it's very important that this money that we're asking for, for bonds, that the mayor is asking for, is, is staying under the 2.5, and, and the taxpayers should, uh, out there should realize that. That's very important. And, um, also, that, what do we want over there? Another police station, an empty building, uh, that just rotted away? This is, the superintendent's has stated that he's going to pay, uh, pay for the bond, so, again, uh, I just think that it's the right thing to do, and, uh, I'll be voting in favor of this bond. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Arigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just want to clarify a couple of things that have been stated. As far as bond rates being the lowest, the information that we were given at a summit on Saturday, we have bond rates at 5%, which is the highest that we have in this list of bond rates. So if we looked at, if we looked at the list that we were given, we would know that two of the bonds, one of them being, uh, the reconstruction of McKinley School, is at that, one of the highest rates that we have. So, the idea that, um, bond rates are at its lowest is false. I do think we can wait. I do appreciate the superintendent's, um, good graces in being able to have approximately $260,000 in his budget a year to, to be able to pay for this, but I think we can wait. School's not going anywhere. It's going to be three years before, uh, kids are in the new school. And I, I just want to clarify, you know, a lot of people are going to throw out a lot of things. I've heard 80%. For all the math teachers out there, just to clarify, we're, we're bonding 42 million and we're getting 29 back. That's 70%. So, I know people want to talk, talk about 80%, just to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. With that, we will have a meeting on this on Wednesday night at 6 o'clock here in the chamber regarding this issue. Okay, so just that everybody knows. Hmm? 5 o'clock?
27:00.
Okay, 5 o'clock, I'm sorry, 5 o'clock this Wednesday. So with that, I will close this hearing.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on the proposed bond order to pay the cost of construction, originally equipping and furnishing the Staff Sergeant James J. Hill School in the amount of $42,402,796.
And I would again like to remind everybody, this is not a question and answer period. We will take this up at, at a committee, a whole meeting, and we are just looking to hear from the public what their thoughts are on it. Question, if they want to attend the meeting regarding this, which is on the 27th of this month at 5 o'clock?
6.
6 o'clock. We will bring that up at that point. Mr. Mayor, your floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I know you want to take each one of these individual loan orders up separately, but you probably all understand those other two tie into this one. This one goes nowhere without the other two. So, you know, if you want to take the other two up at the same time, it might make sense just because in the, in the big picture of things, that's what we will ultimately be voting on and discussing. As far as, I just want to say a couple of things. The, uh, the notion that, you know, we could build, I, I'm digressing a little bit, the notion we could build a new stadium for $2 million is, is unrealistic. But that being said, we've got to go out with an RFP anyway, you'll see what the costs are when those numbers come out, so everything, obviously, is very, very transparent. This particular loan order, um, uh, Mr. President, we've talked about it, the city council, I know, has known about it for a long time. It's the final piece to the school building program that we committed to the citizens, the families, and the children of this community back in 1999. This is the refurbishing and rebuilding of the McKinley School. For anybody who has been in the McKinley School for more than five minutes, you don't need to, uh, really, um, look far to understand the need of why we, uh, why we need to build this new school and why this loan order is so critical. Originally, this school was built in 1905 for 392 students. Right now, current enrollment, or at least 2011, 2012, was closer to 500. This new school has to be built for 690 students. Those are the MSBA's numbers. So when we talk about what was originally told to the city council and what, you know, things unfortunately change, and we try, as a community, both on the city side and school side, to make sure that we do everything we can, obviously, to keep up with the rising demand, uh, both of our student population and of education in the year 2013. You know, it's very, very important, and I've heard people say it, uh, who spoke before me, about why people decide to settle in a particular community. And it has to do with a lot of things. Yes, it has to do with our facilities, our stadiums, our hockey rinks, but it, but it also, and probably no more important for a parent when they look to settle in a community, is the schools. And what type of education, what type of learning experience is my child going to receive? And I can assure you that if this city council votes to approve this loan order, you will get a state-of-the-art 2013 elementary school that every single child of the McKinley School District deserves. We, uh, we have thought long and hard about where to put the school. There was conversation about that. As much as we would have liked to maybe put it at the Harry Delarussue location or keep it in its existing location, it just did not make sense, whether for logistical reasons or financial reasons. This turned out to be the best place for the school, and, 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 in addition to that, it turns out to be the most cost-effective. We, uh, I think have debated this, we've talked about it. I get a strong sense among city counselors, just from what I've heard at the financial summit and what I've heard here tonight, that there is definitely an appetite to approve this, uh, school building, uh, or the final piece to this school building program, and I'm encouraged by that. But I need you to know that these other two loan orders are critical and are tied to this loan order. This loan order goes nowhere unless those other two bond authorizations are approved because we need to replace that pack land, and in reconfiguring the fields, it's going to cut into certain properties, you know, there's obviously takings that are involved, you know, takings that will be involved. The reason why Counselor, uh, Arigo, and he's correct, um, you know, to say that it's not 80% funded, it's 70% funded, but it's 70% funded when you factor in the amount of ineligible's that are not going to be covered, such as takings of the field and, and of the properties that's going to, um, you know, be required to make traffic flow in and out and keep the kids as safe as we possibly can coming in and out of the facility. So, um, I'm here tonight, obviously, as a proponent. I know that, uh, you know, this is really a vision that, um, you know, probably predates, it goes back to 1999. I know I was here to take that initial vote when we voted to authorize the five-school building program. I know some of us were here at that time. But, again, if you were really to look at every school that we have built, if there was any school that deserved it more than, than the McKinley, I'm not sure that you could make a reasonable argument that that would be the case. The McKinley School is long overdue, and I ask, I ask, um, I ask for your support here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any other proponents? Name and address for the record, sir, you have two minutes.
Paul Dakin, Superintendent of Schools. I'd ask if it's possible that I had a little more time, seeing as I'm speaking for the entire school department.
Everybody else the same time limit, you will get two minutes, sir.
Okay, well, let me try to rush through a few things. First of all, addressing the issue of $85 million in 1999, as we know, inflation is one thing, but if you take a look at the construction industry and what China has done to steel costs, and the rise of, of construction materials during that time, it's exponential as compared to the inflation rate. Likewise, to compare to that time, here we are, this building won't be open till 2015, that's 16 years out. To think that we could possibly stay at $85 million is just not possible. Likewise, this is a much bigger building than we ever projected back in 1999. Who could have ever? And Counselor Powers, you alluded to the studies that we did in enrollment back then, and it was Rick's Associate, I think that was the name that did the studies, and we built our plan according to those studies, but who could have ever predicted the amount of building of larger complexes that had a lot of people in them that we thought would be for empty nesters or others that now have children coming out of them? So the landscape has changed relative to $85 million in the size of the school that's needed. Just to quickly address a couple of other issues that were good things that flushed out during Saturday's meeting, one was the idea of taxes, and I think Mr. Anzoni made a tremendous case that this is not going over the tax levy. think Mr. Anzoni made a tremendous case that this is not going over the tax levy. So, arguments that would tend to scare my elderly aunts and uncles are unfounded, because when I talk to them, they realize that their taxes go up every year. And what they realize this time, they're going to go up like they do every year, except we're going to be foundationing the future of this community with a stadium, a new school, and potentially more office space for City Hall and another McKinley. So, the tax argument, Giorgio Anzoni perfectly explained that your taxes are going up anyway. You might as well get something for it. Second, I've heard, and it needs explanation because I heard it echoed tonight, why didn't we do McKinley earlier? And that's a justified question. And that's an absolute justified question. Well, we had to do the McKinley, we had to do the Paul Revere, we had to do the Whalen. We knew that. When you look at the whole deal, we needed space quickly. So, the first thing to do was grab 500 additional seats by doing the Whalen, because we got a school of 700 for the elementary school, and we built 500 seats that did not exist at that time that we needed to relieve overcrowding. Similarly, we're still getting 200 a year. Why didn't then we do the McKinley or the Paul Revere? Again, overcrowding is here, and again, we needed more seats. So, what did we do? We built the Rumney Mash, 500 seats that did not exist, that within that four years' time, we added 1,000 seats in the school. The schools needed more than the 1,000. But that's why, needing those seats, we could not do Paul Revere or McKinley, which rightfully so deserved to be done sooner. If you think of it with a stable population, with a growing population, we had to add seats. That plan added seats. So, let's go to the next issue, because we might as well flush it out so people understand it. Why the Paul Revere before the McKinley? Well, the McKinley, despite what it is, and the Paul Revere is of the same era, they were built at just about the same time. The McKinley had a sound roof. It still has a sound roof. It's why we want to keep that building. It has a sound exterior, a tight exterior, a wonderful brick job that's been cared for over the years, unlike that at the Paul Revere. The envelope of that building was a lot stronger. In addition, despite all the problems that I think are certainly not a place that we want teachers and students to be, it is a better environment than the seven or eight feet of water we had continually to pump out of the Paul Revere cellar. So, those combinations of factors said, what's the obvious here? We have to do Paul Revere before McKinley. We needed 1,000 seats before. That was the thinking. Those that think the McKinley should have been done first, I wish it could have been. I also wish I could have done it and get 1,000 seats for the kids that we needed for. So, that puts, you know, that issue of why, that's the transparent view of why McKinley didn't get done second. We needed 500 more seats there. In looking at the whole thing...
Mr. Superintendent, I just gave you three extra minutes.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I ask the rules be suspended.
And I think it's time.
Mr. President.
And I think it's time that we...
Mr. President.
I have only two minutes. Carol Ty, 51 Endicott Avenue, Revere School Committee.
If he's giving it up for you.
Mr. President, Mr. President, can I speak, please?
No, the superintendent has the floor.
I want to overrule.
Superintendent has the floor.
I want to vote.
The superintendent has the floor. I'm giving him the floor.
I want to...
I'm giving him the floor.
Overrule this three minutes.
One more.
Okay, thank you.
With the recommendation of Ms. Ty.
Okay.
Well, that even shouldn't have been necessary. I think it's being rude.
You know, I just want to quickly speak to the vision here, too. This vision started in 1999. The then-Mayor Haas was in on those original conversations and was leading the effort at that time. He passed the baton to Tom Ambrosino, whose mission was to do as much as he could after that. A baton that was led in the first part of the relay by the then-Mayor Haas. Tom did all he could during his tenure. He's passed the baton on to Din, who's willingly taken that. But, something that is critical here, and I think the community needs to understand this, because this is my wow factor, he's thought of a way to complete the promise of 1999 that started with Bob, went through Tom, and honoring that by doing McKinley. But he's added the other components of this work that truly engaged the community to elevate itself to a place where even more people want to be. He's elevated and bridged the buildings of the school with his own initiative, which was to revitalize Broadway and revitalize the community. This is a perfect timing. Now, to address one more issue, we build these schools at the set square foot construction rate by Mass School Building Authority. We don't build a penny more. We have architects and consultants that's worked with us through these projects. They know what we demand. And if you walk through our new schools, they look like we spent a heck of a lot more. And Tony, you were in on a lot of those decisions, and you know the construction square foot cost that we do. I'll tell you right now, I have a son that's in this business of building schools. He is now building a high school in a part of the state. It is a high school that's being built at more than all of the sum of all of our buildings, and they're spending more than the square foot cost designated by MSBA. But when doing that, they inherit the extra costs. We're doing it on the slim dime and trying to produce for our people the best possible. Finally, my last point. Timing on this is critical. When we opened that application and when MSBA said, "We will stand up to you and give you your 80% of the building cost," which we recognize as 70% of the project cost, they start at a clock. The clock goes for 120 days. During that 120 days, we have to have in the city's hands the deeds for the properties that we need, which is in one of the upcoming bonds, and the deeds for the land at St. Mary's. We are already behind. If you think, and any of you that have bought a home, or had real estate transactions, or done any of this work, you know how complicated that work can be. The clock started ticking before. The consultants are fearful that if we can't get a vote on this school project, which entails the other two bonds, they are all linked, we can't take the MSB money without having positive votes on these final three bonds. But similarly, we will handicap the city solicitor and those that have to do work to bring this project home within the 120 days that we're allotted to do it. The state wants to see a commitment of a community. Part of that commitment is get our business in order. Part of getting our business in order is in your hands now. We need you to vote on this as soon as possible. From the feeling that I got on Saturday, as the mayor said and echoed, it seems like there's a willingness here. We handicapped ourselves if we can't let and free the people to go do the work they have to do. Likewise, it pinches down construction time. Do I want construction time pinched down? No. You pay more of a premium for it. No. You also get more mistakes because you can't watch it as closely. No, because to meet deadlines, construction people will cut corners. I ask you, I feel and sense that you know you want to do the right thing for the McKinley population, who definitely deserves it and hopefully can understand why you were number five now, but don't delay it any longer so that we have the time and the architects have the time to be able to draw plans accordingly. Don't cry. They're not going to start now until the bonding is there. They're giving us free time up until this point. They can't put the pedal to the metal, nor can we put the pedal to the metal with the federal government relative to land transfers. There's Parker Pizzi, he could tell you how difficult it's going to be. I implore you, I beg you, you took up the other issue, the first issue in bonding tonight. I'd ask you to do the same, not only for the McKinley people, but so that we can deliver you the best possible building without fighting against timelines. And when you fight timelines, you make mistakes.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, sir.
Ed Moshe, 14 Apple Hill Road, Pettingill, Mass.
Two minutes, sir.
Two minutes?
Yes, sir.
I am a lifelong resident of the Revere for 30 years, have 25 years in the school system, and I'm seven years at the McKinley School right now presently. I strongly encourage all the council members who are sitting before me, if they have not done so already, to tour the Whalen School, the Suzie B. Anthony School, the Rumney Mash, and the Paul Revere School. And if after doing so, I would be more than happy to take you through the McKinley School. After doing this, after touring all five buildings, I just want to leave you with one question after you tour through all five buildings. Is it fair? During the past year, I was appointed principal in May, I've taken many, many people through the building. I've taken members of the MSBA. I've taken members of, some of the members of the city council sitting in front of me, other state agencies and city agencies. And the non-verbal gesture going through the building is basically the same. A shake of the head of disbelief. They can't believe it. And I'm looking in front of one council member who just shrugged his shoulders and said, "I can't believe it." It is an issue of equity. The McKinley students, families, and staff members are entitled to and should have what every student has in those other five buildings. Even though we are the most impoverished school in the district, when it comes to pride, dedication, and doing the very best with very difficult conditions, we stand tall. So, I leave you. Equity, no, absolutely does not exist, and only will exist when everybody, people in this room, family members and students, can fit in the building, a new building, that they deserve. Thank you.
Name and address. Are you representing a...
Hi, my name is Erin Michelle.
Are you representing an organization or yourself?
I'm a resident. I'm also a teacher at the McKinley School.
Two minutes, ma'am.
Yes.
What's your address again?
I live on Stevens Street in Revere.
What number?
It's funny that you're asking me what number, and several people didn't have to give a number.
Because they all gave their information.
No, not everybody did, but that's fine.
Well, we're asking, ma'am.
50, that's fine. I just find it amusing, because that was something I kept track of. I invite any one of you to come to my class. I don't want you to tell me when you're coming. I'd much rather you come to my classroom. I don't want to put on a dog and pony show. I want you to come to my classroom, just to see the vibration when the heat is on, so that I have to project my voice so loud. I don't need a microphone. I have a child that is homesick, and I have a TV, and when he calls in, I have to really project my voice. And there are the days that when the plug gets accidentally knocked out because it's in the room next door on a power strip, and I have no idea why he can't call in and why I can't get on my computer, or I have to go next door because it got accidentally unplugged, and the teachers didn't, they don't realize that. I'm sure you're all aware of the fact that Dr. Dakin was voted Superintendent of the Year, but... He's got half a dozen Rolls Royces, and we are the horse and carriage. There's only so much he can do, and there's only so much we can do. I heard that you thought the stadium was deplorable. People go there two hours a week, maybe, once a week? We are in that school seven and a half hours a day, five days a week. And nobody's complaining. Nobody. You have never seen a more dedicated staff. My daughter worked there three years ago, and I told her, I said, "Well, you're going to find cockroaches." And she was like, "Ooh." Well, let me tell you, she loved that building and would love to come back. We all take pride in that building. We scoop up cockroaches. We do what we need to. You want to laugh? But that's our existence. That's our existence. The dip in my room goes down two and a half inches from the main door to the dip, and everybody comes in, "Is this room safe?" Well, they wouldn't let me be here if it weren't safe. I don't know, at least I think they wouldn't. We do have three extra classrooms, so you're thinking, "Oh, we're all set now." Well, the Title I teachers have to share a room with the ELL teachers. That's good. Title I on one side, ELL on the other side. I mean, you have no idea what we deal with. And I'm not even going to take up the whole two minutes. I'm just going to state that the former mayor, who I really like and respect, his own daughter didn't go to the McKinley
Name and address for the record, please.
Domenica Giordano. I live on 194 Vane Street, and I guess I'm representing McKinley parents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a McKinley School parent and Revere resident, I have very strong opinions on the proposed plan to build the new school. I've listened to conversations regarding a new McKinley for over a decade, and year after years, my neighbors and I have been sorely disappointed with the lack of progress on this project. I do want to say that I was here on Saturday, and I don't believe that any of the council members are disputing the fact that we desperately need a new school. Anyone who's been through our school in the last six months to a year knows that by any measuring stick, our facilities are deficient. We do not have handicap access. We have no gym. We have no working cafeteria, no library, no auditorium. Our basement floods and cafeteria temperatures reach 105 degrees in the summer without ovens. So, I'm going to just speak under the assumption that all of our elected members have visited the school and understand the gravity of the situation. I would like to address some of the questions brought up by council members this weekend. Councilman Arigo tweeted that five schools were promised at $85 million, and we've built four for $88.6 million, and this brings us to $138 million. And although some thought I would be outraged by that tweet, I wasn't. I appreciate the fact that you took the time to look at the numbers. But I also think it's important to look at the broader picture. And when the original numbers were proposed, the McKinley was scheduled to be completed in 2008. And anyone who paid taxes or raised their families in 2008 knows that the economic climate has changed drastically. I can only speak in reference to real estate takings. That's my business. And I also got some numbers today. The average price of a three-family home in 2008 was $268,000, and if you look at the last 12 months, the average price of a three-family home is $452,000. A lack of inventory and low interest rates means that those numbers will continue to rise. So, the longer we wait, the more expensive this project will become. I did hear some counselors this weekend raise questions about the school remaining on Yemen Street, and I would tell you that we know that this wouldn't work. Seven properties would need to be taken by eminent domain as opposed to the three currently proposed, and with numbers that I just expressed, that's a huge expense. Traffic in the area as it sits currently, in order to drop off and pick up your kids at school, everyone's parked illegally, and it actually hinders emergency vehicles from accessing Vane and Warren Street. And as a resident of Vane Street, I think that puts me at a safety disadvantage. As Councilman Penta can attest to, Beauchamp parents do not want us at their school. The school was designated, those facilities were designated for those students, and the cost of busing our students across the city for two years, along with the money needed to tear down and remove the existing building, is wasteful. Finally, there would be no outside area for McKinley students. And I just want to bring up, with Revere on the move, and how conscious we are of the obesity epidemic, that at our school, BMI testing has determined that more than 50% of our first and fourth graders are obese. Those students have no outdoor area for recess. When they do go outside, they go to the Hill Park. And the problem with Hill Park is that the equipment is dilapidated, but the equipment is also covered in profane graffiti. So, if your child can read, you need to be prepared to do a lot of explaining for curse words that they may not have heard yet. Also, there's a safety issue. Hill Park is not fenced, and there's no way to prevent our child from wandering out or from someone else from wandering in. And I think that the expense to our community would be much higher if we lose a child or a child is injured on the way back and forth to recess than it is to build a new building. So, what we do know is that the state has offered an enormous grant to aid the community in construction. We know there's no Prop 2.5 override necessary. We know the city has several bonds currently outstanding which need to be rescinded, thereby freeing up community dollars. And this leads parents to question... And this leads parents to question the blatant inequity of our district. Why is it that five schools were scheduled to be rebuilt and McKinley is the only school which has been ignored? I've heard parents ask if it is because we are the poorest school in the city, with 85% of our students receiving free or reduced lunch. I've heard people say it's because we have the most diverse demographic with the largest ELL population in Revere. The community is baffled. In my opinion, I think the council and the city have become used to our families sitting quietly by while our kids are pushed aside, and other schools in better areas are provided with the extras. Well, I will tell you tonight that the McKinley community is done with complacency. We vote, we pay taxes, and now it's time that we're heard. I ask that the council... I ask, I plead that the council vote this evening. We have waited patiently for over a decade. Time is of the essence, and at the very least, in the past 12 years, we have earned the right to look our elected officials in the eyes when you decide whether or not our children are worth it.
Donna Ripert, 172 Enter Card Avenue.
You have two minutes, ma'am.
I'll give you two minutes.
Thank you.
I'm here not only as a school committee person that wants the McKinley School, but I'm also here as a grandparent. I could look at the friends of mine, my colleagues, who have grandchildren in school. Can anybody raise their hand and say that they're in Revere, but they're at the McKinley School? They're at the McKinley School. Well, one out of all of you. I'm talking as a grandparent. My granddaughter would be ready to go to school in two years. I want my son and my daughter-in-law to stay in the city. There's not gonna be room for her at the McKinley School in two years to start school. I don't know where she'll have to go in the beginning, because she'll be sitting on somebody's lap. But I want a new school, so by the time the new school's finished, the second granddaughter will be starting school. And I want to see them in a new school, and that's what I'm asking you. As a grandparent, I'm asking you to build the school for my grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Robert Cataldo, 7B Street Circle, Wakefield.
Two minutes, sir.
I am a physical education teacher at the McKinley School, and I'm here to represent the children. We've talked about the buildings and all this other stuff the kids need to say, and I'm here to represent them, because they're a very unique group of kids. 480 kids that go to the school now and hundreds and thousands that will attend in the future. I'm one of the only, are the only children in the city that do not have the access of a gymnasium, and probably in the state. I don't know how many schools don't have a gymnasium. They are so deprived. They love gym. As old and gray as they may be, there's no happier face than they see my face coming down the hall every morning. They love to go out. They love to go out and play. They are, we had a small ear as it was, and now because of the classrooms that are out in the playground, okay, you know, it's even more limited. I've taught in schools with gyms. We can do so much for those kids, but these poor McKinley kids are so limited. They go out in the freezing cold. Anyone who comes by that school in the winter sees us out there, because what can you do with them in a classroom with their chair? I mean, and they don't complain, believe me. These little six-year-olds and seven-year-olds, they're all bundled up, and they run around like it's 80 degrees, no problem. They are amazing. But someone has to stand up for them. They, it's so unfair. People talked about that tonight, okay? I went to that school 50 years ago, okay? In the 1960s, if you didn't have a gym, it wasn't a big deal. I could get on my bike and go to playgrounds and things like that. It's a different world today. These kids can't get on their bicycle and go play. Where are they supposed to go? It's just not right, okay? When I tell people, when I meet people and I say I'm a gym teacher, I tell them I don't have a gym, they look at me like, "Are you out of your mind? How can you not have a gym? It's 2013. You don't have a gym?" I mean, you know, I've played ball with a lot of you guys. I mean, we grew up, sports was so, you know, Council Janino said, you know, it's great memories, okay? We owe it to these kids. Give them a gym, please.
Name and address for the record, ma'am, please. Use the mic, please. We have to get it on TV. We need it for the records.
Sorry.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Ivy Beth Nelson. I live at 9 Genesee Street in Revere. I have been involved with the city for pretty much the majority of my life. I started here dancing when I was three years old. I then later became a business owner in the city and owned my own dance studio for eight years. Mr. Hass was at the ribbon cutting for that. You know, so I've been here through, I worked at Wonderland for many years with Mr. Patch's wife, trained at Greyhound for 10 years. I fought my mother my whole life, "Please let me go to school in Revere." I grew up in Winthrop. "Please, Mom, please, Mom." No, no, she felt it was better in Winthrop. I came home with facts to her. "It's more accredited in Revere. Please let me go. That's where my friends are, that's where I'm happy." No, no, no. Year after I graduated, I got to move to Revere. Yay! 20 years I've been here, a resident of the city. I now, in June, will be a homeowner in the city, as of five years in June. So I pay my taxes, I have two children. One of my children is, I have a son, he's just turned six on Saturday, just started at the kindergarten in McKinley this year. So I am a parent of McKinley. I also have a 15-month-old daughter at home that will also be a student at McKinley. And for more and more reasons than we can list here tonight, as much of other people have stated before me, for many, many, many reasons, we really, 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 really could use all these things that we are proposing this evening. So I absolutely propose all the above. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, name and address for the record, please.
Nancy Martel, 50 Library Street. I've worked as a teacher in Revere for the past 14 years, and I'm a resident for most of my life here in Revere. My husband and I were fortunate enough to buy my grandparents' home 10 years ago in the McKinley School District, something that I was very proud of. And being a teacher in the city, I was assuming at that point, my children would someday go to a new McKinley School. So here we are 10 years later, and my son will be a kindergartner student next year at the McKinley School. I'm not thrilled about the class size that he'll be attending. I'm not thrilled that there's no gym or no library for him, but I am very proud to send him to a place with amazing teachers, students, and families. The McKinley School is a community. As a former middle school teacher, I could always tell the students that were passed on to us from the McKinley School, they embraced everything about being part of a building. Now, as the assistant principal at the McKinley School, I get to see the wonderful things that go on on a daily basis. I am proud to send my son to the school, where he will not only learn academics, but compassion and empathy, but he deserves a new school. All of the children do.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, you want to speak, ma'am? Beat me to it. Name and address for the record, you have two minutes.
Elisa LaPlante. I reside at 95 Ridge Road in Revere. I've been an educator for 28 years. I've been teaching for the last 15 years at the McKinley School. I would just like to share some of my experiences with you. My first classroom was located in the basement next to the boiler room. The fumes from the boiler room were escaping into the classrooms. Asbestos-wrapped pipes ran through the classroom. I was informed not to touch them since asbestos is a known carcinogen, which is a cancer-causing agent. My first relocation to another classroom was a corner room, where only two windows could be held open by books to keep them from falling shut. This was the only source of ventilation inside. Every window leaked water during inclement weather. Electrical outlets had sparks coming out of them and were taped over. I was told not to use them for fear of electrocution or fire. I'm sorry, but it's been an ongoing battle, so... As time passed, I was relocated to the second floor above the main office, which appeared to be a breeding ground for palmetto bugs, which are also known as the American cockroach, or water bug. So on several occasions, the students were disrupted by an American cockroach approximately two inches in size, because I don't think people realize how large these are, running across my classroom, causing mayhem. Sticky traps were placed around the classroom to capture these large cockroaches. Each day upon arrival, I would ponder what I would find on these traps. So each occurrence, I submitted a past activity report so my principal would have a record of it. During this period, nothing could be kept in the floor in fear of taking one of these insects home. While I was teaching in this classroom, I witnessed a colleague across the hall catching a window that fell out of its frame, which could have caused severe injury to this teacher and her students. Recently, a colleague, Bridget Monical, who was an educator and a colleague of mine, at the McKinley School for the past six years, she was teaching in a basement classroom where floor and ceiling tiles were missing, a ventilation system that was inoperative, and only one basement window barely opened. Due to these conditions, Ms. Monical's health was compromised. She was relocated to a computer lab on the second floor, impacting last year's grade five students as well as this year's grade five students. During this time, the entire lab was unusable for its original purpose, hence influencing the entire school. Last week, during a fifth-grade field trip, our students were oppressed and in awe regarding the accommodations of the new McKinley Schools. Many students were in a quandary as to why the McKinley School was lacking these modern facilities. In spite of the deplorable conditions that our students are forced to endure at the McKinley School, they attend class regularly and strive for higher achievement. A modern facility would give our students an equal playing field as the rest of the city. Imagine what they could achieve if they had the same equitable conditions as other students are receiving in the district. During the temporary relocation of the fifth grade pending new construction, we were able to provide for the first time in years a temporary art and physical education classroom, which are inadequate due to our expanding population. As a resident and taxpayer in the city of Revere, I believe that all McKinley students should be guaranteed a new facility, which would support the educational requirements to learn in an environment that has adequate and sanitary bathroom conditions, a working cafeteria, a functional library, a gymnasium/ playground, an auditorium, labs for science and technology, and classrooms capable of supporting art and music. On behalf of the McKinley School community, I propose that a vote be taken here tonight by the members of the city council to continue with the progression and construction for our new McKinley School facility. I thank you very much for this opportunity.
There you go. Name and address for the record, ma'am.
My name's Camille Rosales. My address is 85 Suffolk Avenue. I support the idea of making a new school, 'cause in our school, we don't have a gym. A gym is our classroom, is a classroom, and there's a lot of pipes. Well, in the basement, the floor is scraping off. Like, the paint is coming off. We don't have an art room, we don't have a music room. For our library, we bring bins of books. In our classroom, we pick some of them up. For music, we go upstairs where the lunchroom is, and we play a recorder. For arts, we do have an art room, which is good. And I believe we should have a gym room, we should have a music room, we should have a library room.
Mr. President, that was terrific. Mr. President, I'm gonna make a motion that we vote on our... We're still in the middle of the hearing, sir. We're still in the middle of the hearing. Okay, we're still on the proponents of the hearing side of this issue. I know many want to speak, and I think we got the hint tonight. So what I'm gonna do at this time, I'm going to close this portion of the hearing of the proposals, and I'm gonna open it to those who are opposed to it. I dare you. Sir, step forward, name and address for the record. Name and address for the record, you have two minutes, sir.
Okay, here I go. Rob Sullivan, 11 Barrett Street, Revere, Mass. For the record, I attended the McKinley School in the 60s. I know what the place is like, I know what it's like being a student there. Obviously, it was a long time ago, the place hasn't gotten much newer. My kids went there through the 90s and 2000. I was part of the McKinley School community, doing fundraisers, beautification projects, and going to other school events, okay? I'm not here to say we don't need a new McKinley School. Anybody who has been to the McKinley School knows we need a new McKinley School. What I'm here to say is that putting it at Hill Park is not in the best interest of this city. You are gonna create traffic nightmares, a park avenue, you are gonna cut down on people being able to drive along Broadway, you are gonna have buses driving across the front of the school, having kids dodge buses. Now, I understand that, you know, we do need the school, but the design is constantly evolving. You guys will be voting on things you don't even know how it's gonna impact the community. There's no impact study on just on five... No, there isn't. I spoke to the guy here Saturday, he said it was not here. He said it was preliminary, okay?
Excuse me, please, please keep the comments here and don't ask questions from the audience. Thank you.
Okay, so I mean, I live in the area. The people who live along Park Avenue don't even know the school was going in there, okay? This thing hasn't been transparent. You guys have decided you're gonna put it at the McKinley School, you're gonna put it at Hill Park, regardless of what the people in the neighborhood feel. And Hill Park is a vital part of the community, okay?
Excuse me, sir, address the council, please.
I'm not saying that we don't need a new McKinley School. What I'm saying is that the McKinley School should be built at the existing site. And the reason why the existing site is seen to be so cost prohibitive is because the superintendent is including taking seven houses into the price. You don't need to take seven houses, okay? All you need to take is one house on Foster Street, and we can build a school on the existing location without having to uproot the whole neighborhood, okay? The fact is, and let's be honest about it, building, maintenance, and siding hasn't been the long suit of this particular school superintendent. If you look at the Paul Revere School, that school was built knowing it was inadequate, and it was still built because we got the money. But now we're paying a price for that. The same thing with Rummy Mosh. Yeah, we have 500 new school seats, but they're in a location where you've increased the traffic accidents in that area.
Excuse me, sir, address the council, address the council, that's who you're addressing, nobody else.
I'm sorry about that.
And your two minutes are up.
Now, everybody else had way more than two minutes, and so I'm hoping, I'm sorry, here's where I'll finish it up with. Obviously, the school, there's a bigger issue here than just the school department. There's more to this city than just the school department. There are people who live here, there are people who have to pay the bills. Councilor Penta talks about a cup of coffee here, a cup of coffee here. Sooner or later, they add up and you can't buy any more coffee, okay? It costs too much. And this proposal costs too much. The figures have been doctored, and I was here for the financial summit, the figures that were bandied about were all wrong, and everybody admitted they were wrong. So for you guys to say, "Yes, we have all the answers and we're gonna vote on it," that's just not true, okay? And so I say, keep it at the McKinley School. We need a new McKinley School. Build it where it is, on its present location. That's what's in the best interest of the city, and that's what's in the best interest of the taxpayer.
Thank you, sir.[1798.17]
Thank you, sir. Are there any opponents that have the nerve? Are there any opponents? Hearing, no, no, closed. Outside of the hearing. Councilor Guanasso, two minutes, please. Excuse me? I was going to do that after we spoke.
Praise your hands for me.
Thank you. You're right. I didn't do it before.
Back in 1999, Mr. President, I had the opportunity to be part of a very aggressive and ambitious program that was offered by the superintendent of schools and the current mayor at that particular time, Robbie Hess. And I thought it was ambitious at best, and I thought it was something that was going to be great for our community for the future. I was always led to believe that the Paul Revere McKinley would be one of the two schools to be completed first because of the need. And certainly, I attended the Paul Revere School, and my children all attended the Paul Revere School, and I know what the Paul Revere School was all about. They didn't have a gymnasium. We played kids in... When we went to the Lincoln School to play the Lincoln School in basketball, we didn't... Baskets are way up there, because we used to play it short and field. So I sympathize and express my congratulations to the young lady to get up here and say that we need a new school. You certainly do need a new school. And I'm very proud of the fact that there's a couple of hundred people in attendance here in strong support of this particular proposal, because that's what you should be doing. It's the best interest of you and your community and your children that you live and hope to bring up within our system and go off to a better future. But we also have several thousands of people out there that are watching maybe this evening, and we've been talking to each and every one of the councils and being objective about it. And all we're merely doing is going through the economic process of it, as who's paying the bill. There are some people out there that want to drive a Cadillac but only can afford a Chevrolet. So this is in terms of what we're talking about. So don't take anything out on this particular council, because this council to the person is all for you. We want to make certain that the McKinley School is given a nice and adequate school to attend for their children. Nobody has reservations about that. But don't fault any of us who sit here and review the cost factor. I was lucky enough to be here on Saturday for half of the program, and I did go home and review some of the proposal. We're asking to bond $22 million, even as cost effective as it might seem, and it's going to be way off in the future, and our children will be enjoying this plant in 2015. That's going to happen. But at what cost? I have a very, very heavy heart when it comes to the Paul Revere School. I just told you some of the facts why. But I had to eat 50 seats at the Paul Revere School. You know why? Couldn't afford anymore. And Ms. B. A. in the wisdom and superintendent brought a proposal to us. It was like, take it or leave it. You're having a greater opportunity to express your feelings and possibility of getting more than they got at the Paul Revere School. And there's no school in the school system that's more diverse than the Paul Revere School. It's one of a kind in state. It's an innovative school. So be proud of those factors. But when I go by it and I know that the day that they completed that, it was too small, it bothered me. I have a conscience, and I have to relieve that conscience tonight. Tonight's my opportunity to relieve it. There's 50 less seats, and at that, it would have been not enough. So now, when you're saying you're going from 500 to 690, that's the Taj Mahal. That's really a big jump. That's almost 200...
Excuse me, council. Could you wind up, please?
I'm going to wind up right now. I'm just saying, don't pick on any particular council who's questioned these figures, because we have a very, very strong commitment to the taxpayer, of which you're some of it too. But there's also a great portion that aren't here tonight, and we want to speak to them also. So we're all for a new school. Make no mistake about it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council. Councilor Hess.
Thank you, Mr. President. Getting back to 1999, when Superintendent then Carol Ty came into my office and says, "We have a great opportunity here to build five schools sponsored by Commonwealth of Massachusetts." We put the wheels in process at that point in time, and it's great you see it coming around, full cycle, 360 degrees. Here we are tonight, looking at the possibility of bonding the new school. I have close ties to the McKinley. I grew up in Warman Street, adjacent to Yeeman Street. My daughter taught there for seven years, and she did teach in the cellar, so she knows what it's all about. When I was mayor for eight years, we had major problems there. We had the asbestos scare at the time when I was being picketed by union people, but that was resolved early. All I had to do was go out there at 7:00 in the morning and say, "Do you realize what's going on?" I explained the situation, and every one of those union members took off. Without question, we need the school. I would never assign a document from Carol because I was leaving office in two months, okay? I believed it. It's too bad it was not the second school, but that's water over the dam. Let's look at the future. Let's look at addressing this issue. I, myself, will vote for it without question. I'm not going to vote against something that I started in the beginning. We have some of the colleagues here with me this evening. We have former... We have former Superintendent Carol Ty and current Superintendent Paul. When you look at the total authorization of $44.3 million for a new school, in which the Commonwealth of Mass will be paying $28,000, that's a give me. You have to take advantage of it. You cannot deny it, because if you deny it, you're affecting all the taxpayers in the community, because if we don't accept this, five years, 10 years down the road, and the McKinley's still there, we would have to pay top dollar from dollar one up, and that will really cause our taxpayers grief. Now, I agree with the previous speaker. I, myself, made some comments about the bond issue, whether it will cost, okay? I'm very concerned how it will affect our taxpayers of the community. And I know, which you mentioned, a cup of coffee. I want to know what the tangible cost will be to the taxpayer of our committee, which many of you people here are, okay? So my comment tonight is, I'm for it. There's no question about it. All I want to do is get some information pertaining to what the cost will be to our taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council. Councilor Redden.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, just to address the negative, there isn't much here I agreed tonight, but for the gentleman who came up here and suggested that this was some sort of a planned done deal without any thought at all, nothing could be further from the truth. Once again, I would advise you that I have been through dozens of meetings, literally dozens of meetings, about this very issue. The people who were vetting this, the professional people, the architects, the engineers who were vetting this, were here in this city council, explaining it on any number of occasions to anybody who would listen. This has been as open and transparent a process as you could ever have seen. And what we did was, we narrowed it down to the most cost effective, the most efficient way to build this school, and it turned out that it was on Hill Park. Many of us thought, geez, it's a shame we have to give up Hill Park for this. There's no doubt about that. But that is what it came down to, to do the right thing, the right thing for the people in this city, and especially the right thing for the McKinley people. I want to congratulate the McKinley people for being here tonight. You spoke up for yourselves, and you made an example of the democratic process here tonight. And I hope that young lady who spoke in favor of the McKinley School, who spoke for herself, remembers the day that she appeared before the Revere City Council and swayed this body, persuaded this body to do the right thing. And I... And by the way, and I don't mean that in any way, shape, or form to imply that we weren't going to do the right thing anyway, but we like to hear it from you. We like to hear the people speak, and we like it when they tell us what they want. And you told us what they want, and I am fully confident that this body tonight will vote in favor of this measure, and vote in favor of the other measures, by the way, that we have to vote on later on to make this complete. So thank you all so very much for coming and speaking up for yourself. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council. Councilor Janino, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. We all heard a lot of important points tonight from a lot of important people, but there was not one person that spoke at this podium who made more of an impact than Matt Young Lady who came up here to represent her school. She's a product... She's a product of the McKinley School and of the integrity that that school has and of the education that she received there, that she could come up and articulate how she felt about the building that she grew up in. And I can't even tell you. I get emotional talking about it because that was so overwhelming. Her parents and her teachers and her principal should be so proud of her, because I get nervous talking up here still. I can't imagine how she felt. And not only that, but it's not just her. She represents hundreds of children behind her that's probably past their bedtime right now, that couldn't come up here tonight to talk about this issue. We're not talking about the bonds, because she probably doesn't even know what a bond is. She knows that she doesn't have a gym that she can play in, and she knows that she doesn't have an art room that she can learn about the color wheel in. And those are the important things that I had at the old wheeling school that I think all students in the city should have, so they could come and grow and give back to the community, because her and the hundreds of students that stand behind her are the future of Revere. They're the future taxpayers, and they'll be paying for the school in 30 years. And they're the future students and the future teachers and the future elected officials. And those are the people that I'm thinking about right now, and I can't even talk about how impactful that was to me. And another thing that also, I know it's been brought up, but the value that this adds to homeowners. So even if you're older, or you don't have children in the system, or your kids are already graduated, your value of your home's going to go up if you have better schools, because people are going to be moving here to go to our schools. I was proud to go to Revere Schools. I didn't want to leave Revere Schools. And I just think that's so, so very important. And as far as the meeting this past Saturday, I wasn't able to attend. Some of us still have to work, and I did have to work that day. And if I was given a month or two's notice before, I would have attended, as I'm sure many of us would have attended and been able to attend longer, because this isn't an issue I want to talk about in an hour. This is an issue that we need to sit down and talk about for many hours, because it's an important issue, because it's not a building, it's futures. And it's not one future, it's hundreds of futures. And that's why I'm here tonight, and I support the school.
Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I supported a new McKinley School from day one. In fact, I urged that school be built prior to the Rumbly Marsh Academy. I was told we needed theme schools back then. Well, so much for theme schools. I had four grandchildren that went to that school and a great-grandchild who's attending that school now. So I know what the school is all about. I listened to those children, and they tell me what it's about. They tell me about the inequities in that school. There's no doubt. Now, I hear a lot of numbers passed around, and I'm going to vote for this school. In fact, I'm going to urge the president to take this vote up tonight for the three items that affect this school. But I hear numbers passed around, okay? And just so everybody understands, we still have 20-some-odd million dollars of bonded debt that we've already bonded for other school projects, 13 of them to be exact. This school is going to cost, in principle, $24,704,000. It's going to cost in debt service $17,726,000, for a total of $42 million plus. That's what it's going to cost. Personally, I think that school is worth it. The kids down there waited too long. Later on, you're going to see me vote against the refurbishing of the old McKinley School, because I think that's something that can be kept in abeyance for a couple of years. The kids are still out in there. By all estimates, Dr. Dakin says 200 kids a year coming into the city. We may need that school for classrooms, so let's not rush the judgment and start turning it into offices. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know where I mentioned coffee, except for having coffee and talking to people. I never put a price tag on coffee. But with that being said, you know, I was here in 1999. I was one... I made a statement Saturday. Someone said it wasn't 99, and I think someone corrected me and said, "You were right." And former Mayor Hess even said it today when I walked in here. It was 99. So with that being said, I did make a promise for the five schools. You know, should it have McKinley been built already? I don't know. Superintendent has reasons for building the other ones. But you know something? Good waiters get good tips. And them waiting to get in a first-class school, a school that can accommodate kids that if it was built five years ago, would have been shipped to my school, to Lincoln School, or somewhere else. So sometimes, you know, you get lucky, just to get lucky. But why it wasn't built before was other reasons for it. I would not question our superintendent. We put him in charge of our schools. I think he does a great job. And people forget how much grant money he's got over the years. I don't forget it. But that being said, 80% of the funding, and let me get this correct, because the numbers are numbers, 80% of the construction of the building is reimbursed from the state. Of course, you've got to buy the furnishings and you buy the extras that they're throwing on to make it a first-rate school. The biggest complaint I heard is the cost of where the school is going. The four sites they had, this was the cheapest, because I was against this at first until they came up with the price figures. This was the cheapest out of all of them. I think Superintendent Dakin wanted to take the stadium, which I was against, which would have meant $10 million more than this one. Some people want to put it in a McKinley School. You can't, unless you want to build it five, six stories high. An elementary school, five, six stories high? Come on. Doesn't work. But the biggest negative I heard coming out of this school was the traffic on Park F. And like I said, taking of those areas, those homes, you're doing it right. You're making relief on Park F. There's a lot that's been put into this, but people are saying this is just talked about in the past month or so. I know I got papers home that, you know, that probably a rainforest was chopped down for it, the information you got on these schools, the changes. We got schools prices on, putting on McKinley School, putting on Paul Revere Stadium. They even looked at putting the stadium behind the high school. There was all kinds of facts and figures and different proposals brought up here. But I'm not going to go on long, because the president won't let me.
I was just about to do that, council.
I will, and I will vote tonight for the McKinley School and the rest of these bonds.
Thank you, council. Councilor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was for the McKinley School. I've been for it ever since I was a police officer. But in all fairness to the opponent that got up there today, I did have... I went to the building committee meetings, because I did have an issue with the taking of the Hill Park. But keeping an open mind, I had several meetings with the mayor, the superintendent, and the Ward Four counselor, Councilor Redden. It's his ward. And they kind of convinced me that, you know, maybe it was more sentimental reasons for me, because I grew up in that park, that then really the necessity of having it there. I also... Somebody made a statement Saturday at the meeting that he was a counselor at 99 when they made this promise to council, to the people of McKinley, that they'll build McKinley all the schools. I wasn't here in 99. I wasn't a counselor. But I believe in that promise. You people deserve a new school. You deserve... And honestly, if I was around earlier, I probably would have fought for it to be built sooner. But the council had no input on the Batten order from 99. And I'm not questioning the superintendent. He's a lot smarter than I am. But the idea is, you're going to get a school. You're going to get a school. And hopefully, I'm voting for it tonight also. Hopefully, my colleagues will go along with us, and we'll get this done and get it moving. You know, I grew up in this... I grew up in the Ward Four area. Actually, it's Ward One now. Victoria Street, my grand... My nieces and nephews go to that school. So hopefully, you'll get your school, and you'll get it soon. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Corrigio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't go over two minutes.
Time's up.
I think it's time to move forward. We want to move Revere forward. Revere Public Schools move forward. And I'm prepared to vote tonight for... And I'm prepared to vote tonight for the school for the children of Revere. I just want to mention, originally it was kind of sentimental. My sister taught at the, at the original McKinley School for quite a few years. She spoke about the flooding and the mold. And I thought it'd be more cost-effective to put it there for the neighborhood. But talking to the superintendent, they would have to rent trailers and other equipment to house the students for a few years and it would cost in the millions. So it wouldn't be cost-effective. It is the cheaper way to go. And I looked at the figures tonight, I listened to testimony from everybody, and I think it's the right thing to do. I think we should move forward, vote the thing tonight because construction costs are going up.
I'll sack Counsel. Thank you. Counsel Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to keep this under two minutes. I don't know where this two-minute rule came from, but... Bottom line is, you know, I, I, can I have, can I have the floor here? Thank you. You know, I take every vote up here very seriously. And I've had a lot of people over the last month or so especially, but especially seniors. You know, I have breakfast with a lot of people that are a little older than me. And they're asking me, "How can you vote to bond all this money for the school?" And I tell them the truth. While I'm up here, I'm representing everybody in the city and I'm representing the future of the city. And for me not to vote for this school with 80% funding from the state would be fiscally irresponsible. And when I explain to them that we'll never have another chance to get this kind of help to build a school, and we have to build a school, it may, we may not have to build it today, but we gotta build it in the near future. And then I'd really be hurting the, the future of the city and the taxpayer not to support this. And when you take the time to explain this to people, they understand it, believe me. And so, as long as I'm up here representing the taxpayers and I'm representing the future of the city, I have to do what I know is right. And in this case, I'm certainly in support of the new school. Thank you.
Counsel Orego.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been an interesting journey having this school built, the plans that have gone into it, and seeing some of the costs and seeing, you know, what's gonna happen. The questions I've had, and I've been one of the more vocal people asking questions, are because we were told originally that this was gonna cost $8 million in August. Then we were told it was gonna cost $15 million. Now we're told the whole package is gonna be $23 million. I had reservations about the Hill Park site being the cheapest option. I still think that I'm right. But it's very obvious that we need to build a new school. And, you know, I, I've had conversations with Superintendent Dakin, I've had conversations with the mayor's office, this has been on my mind, the cost of this has been on my mind since the summer. And, you know, when I think about it, are we putting a lot of eggs in one basket? Yeah. Is it a little bit of a gamble? Sure. I think the, the projections that are being, that were put forward to us were a little bit optimistic. But I, I trust our collective thought process and I trust the mayor's thought process and I, I have faith that we can, we can afford this.
Okay, now the infamous hand raise. All in favor? Check 'em back, please. All against?
99%.
99%? Well, I don't know. Wait, wait, can I speak? I wasn't going to speak. But I guess I'm being forced in at this, at my hand and say my piece. Like everybody else, do we want a new McKinley School? Like everybody else, do we feel that the McKinley should've been built first or second? Absolutely. You know, and to be very honest with you, you guys got screwed. Honestly, you really did. But, but may I say, may I say, we have been given a lot of information and a lot of information hasn't been completed. You know, there are, there's financial information, we haven't learned about what's going on up at the St. Mary's property, what really's going on up there. We haven't seen plans for that. And in order to build a school, we have to give up Hill Park and make another park someplace else. Is St. Mary's the best spot for it? Absolutely not. It'll be a, it'll be a softball field, which will be very mosquito-ridden up there. You know, I'd be afraid to send my kids up there early evening in the summer. Excuse me, ma'am, I let you folks have the chance. And I would like that chance though. Thank you. And we do not have all the information. I still have a responsibility, I'm down the Shirley Ave area, I have a responsibility to my folks who live there, who pay taxes down there. A lot of taxes, elderly, I have a lot of elderly down there that pay high taxes, that own their properties. And, you know, I really don't want to vote against the school. Unless I, if I'm forced into it tonight, probably folks, and it's not a nice decision I want to have to make, I probably won't vote for the school tonight. I'm sorry. Because I don't have all that information. You know, I, like I said, I have a responsibility to my folks. And I don't think the planning in this is 100%. I think it should be tweaked. And, you know, that's the way I feel. I'm, I'm really sorry. Now, if I'm forced into it tonight, this is the vote I'm gonna make. I may be the only one. But so be it. What is the rule of the council? Air motion? Roll call. Mr. President? Counsel, Counselor Haas.
Thank you. As the originator of this with former Superintendent Carroll Ty, I would like to make a motion that we approve the bond issue for the McKinley School.
And at this point, I think, Madam Clerk, roll call. Excuse me.
Is this, this is the three?
No, this is just on the McKinley School. We have not had the hearings for the other ones.
This is on the bond order to pay the cost of construction, originally equipping and furnishing the Staff Sergeant James J. Hill School in the amount of $42,402,396. Counselor Orego.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Novoselsky.
No.
No, the bond order has been approved.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're still under suspension of rules. Do I hit, before we leave, folks?
Motion to reconsider.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider, it will not prevail. All in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered. Now you can cheer. We have, we have two other hearings, folks, if you want to stay, please. If you're gonna leave, please leave quietly. We still have business to conduct. Next order.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on the proposed bond order authorizing...
Can I have a one-minute recess? Ladies and gentlemen, please. Please. Thank you. Go ahead.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on the proposed bond order authorizing the acquisition of certain parcels of land required to construct the Staff Sergeant James J. Hill School and acquire land to be converted into parkland in the amounts of $3 million.
Mr. Mayor, proponent.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I'm gonna speak very, very briefly on this. Although it's probably as important, if not more important than the vote you just took, that we get a positive vote on this tonight. As of January 31st, the clock started ticking at 120 days where we have to have the property that's gonna be involved in these takings in our hands, the deeds in our hands. That clock started ticking January 31st. So this vote is absolutely critical to the, you know, in fact, the next loan order that we're gonna talk about, it's part and parcel. We have to know that we can refurbish those fields. So I want to thank the City Council for your, for your brave and for your commitment and for your, and for your bravery tonight in, in voting for this and that leap of faith that you took. Let me just put this a little bit in perspective, though. And I understand that it is your job to provide fiscal oversight in this. But, you know, Counselor Reardon asked, asked, I think, the most pertinent question to George Anzoni last Saturday. Can we afford this based on your 34 years of experience as Director of Finance? George Anzoni answered yes. And that is without a Proposition Two and a Half override. So this is all gonna, gonna be, and again, we didn't know 2008 was gonna hit us, right? So, I mean, you know, but based on the information we have today, this project is gonna go forward without any increase that taxpayers would otherwise take. As far as these parcels here, these parcels are all gonna be part of the requirement that we're gonna need to do. And again, I need to have the deeds in our hand deeded over to the City of Revere by, I believe, the end of May, correct? And we can't even, you know, we can't get started on it unless we get a positive vote on this tonight. If you vote on this tonight, it's gonna give me the authority to start real negotiations, you know, involved with these takings so that we can move forward and comply with the MSBA requirements. So I'm asking you here, just like you did with the last vote, which was really the, you know, the lion's share of what I'm looking for here tonight, to just approve these next two loan orders. And you will have done a real service, not only to the McKinley parents and children that, and faculty and administrators that are here tonight, but really to the entire community. Because when you think about it, for just about the same money that it cost us to get that public safety facility, we're gonna get three new ball fields, a brand-new Harry Delarussue Stadium, a brand-new McKinley School, two new tennis courts and two new basketball courts. That is real investment that people will be able to see and touch for the votes that you took tonight. So I ask for your support and I ask for your vote this evening.
Are there any other proponents?
Just very quickly, because I don't think...
Name and address for the record, sir.
While taking superintendent of schools, just very quickly so that you understand. The, the grant from the state for the school building cannot move forward unless we have this vote and the next vote. So they're all linked together. Where you did one, I just ask that you do the other two tonight.
Name and address for the record, please.
Julie DiMaro Dusset, 33 Luma Street, Revere. As many of you know, I'm very involved in the city. I'm a lifelong resident of the city and I have four small children being educated in the school system right now. One of the reasons that we stayed here when we were deciding to figure out where we're gonna be raising our children was because of the school system. The second reason that it's come into play because of our involvement in the city is the community that we have become involved with, with all of the activities that are here for the youth. I understand the sentiment towards Hill Park, taking that land to put the school on there. I spent a large part of my youth there, but it is the best possible site for the school. And with that, we will need to relocate that field. What better place to relocate it but down behind St. Mary's? I don't think anybody has touched upon this yet, but they're, you know, making that a recreational facility is going to open up the door for an even larger area of recreation. You have natural trails back there that people use to walk their dogs. There's a lot of wildlife around there. You also have Stone Stro away from the Bike to the Sea Northern Strand path that Revere will be a part of at the end of the summer. For somebody who's looking for a place to live that has great schools and also has a lot of recreational facilities, not just for their children, but for them too, Revere is it. And by giving St. Mary's, taking, authorizing this bond for St. Mary's will really just add to the value for the outsider looking into the city. So I hope you approve this bond. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
How you doing? I'm Patrick Keefe, representing Revere Youth Baseball and Softball. I live on 44 Kilburn Street. I'm also representing my children. One of the dimensions of moving this, the land to take over the St. Mary's land is it's a piece of land that we can't lose. The Archdiocese currently has that land and at any point they could take it and not give it to St. Mary's or sell it to the city. That would go into Revere Youth Baseball and Softball. And then where would we have to play? So I'll, I'll keep it really short in the sense that I represent 600 kids that play over at that field. And I do take exception that I have no problem sending my kids to that field and playing there. And 600 parents have no problem sending their kids to that field and hopefully more. So when we're able to add three, three fields to that, to that site, it'll not only take the foot, and no offense to the Archdiocese because I am a member of St. Mary's as well, the foot off of our neck. We can use that land to better serve the City of Revere.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, I will close that portion of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, I will close that portion of the hearing. Counsel Petch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seeing that St. Mary's is in my ward, Ward Six, the reason I didn't mention it before is because I, you know, it was basically, we're talking about the McKinley School. But I did mention it at the summit meeting. We're really, we're really protecting those kids from losing their baseball. I'm tired of, you know, getting on this issue about athletics and how important it is to, to the growth of children. But they do a fabulous job down there in their Little League and the girls' softball. And by adding another school, this complex, they do have some serious problems down there now. St. Mary's doesn't really help, help them out too much down there. I mean, they have sewage problem, they have... This is all gonna be corrected. The sewage problem, new fields, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a dynamite complex. I mean, it's gonna be great for my ward and for the other children from the other wards that go, go there. It's, it's, it's really, unfortunately, the way the Catholic Church is today, you know, you don't know when St. Mary's is gonna, hopefully they'll last forever. Because I'm a member there too and I don't, I don't want to see it to, see it leave. But they're, they're cutting masses, they're doing this. Eventually, they could sell that to a developer. Then we'd get another problem with apartment buildings, maybe condos. And there goes your Little League park and your... And there goes your Little League park and your softball parks. So this is, this is a must. We should vote on this tonight and for my ward and for the rest of the city. And hopefully, we get this done tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Ganasso.
Mr. President, we voted the 42 million. That's a given. The school's there. Now we have to give the kids a place to play. So this is here, is automatic, in my opinion. I, I just don't feel that there's any way in the world we can deny both of these bond issues. Certainly, the acquisitions of these homes are needed and required for the parking, parking facilities around the, the new school and to make it orderly and publicly safe for them. But the kids also need the park. And so there is no question in my mind that both of these have to be voted on. We might as well vote on it this evening because one is part of the other. And to, to issue one part without the rest of it, it doesn't make sense. So if we're gonna go for it, let's go for it. And let's vote on it this evening.
Counselor Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna congratulate both Counselor Ganasso and Counselor Patch. I've never heard them ever speak so eloquently on an issue than they did here tonight. And obviously, the room is in agreement. I also wanna thank the 40 or 50 or 60 other people in the room behind us who didn't get an opportunity to sit here but who came anyway and sat and listened. And we, we heard you cheering. We did hear you cheering. Again, this is, as Counselor Ganasso said, part, just another piece of the puzzle. We need to put this together. We had to do it as a separate bonding issue, but it is good. It is a good thing. It is a good thing for, for the McKinley School community. It's a good thing for the Ward Six community. It's a good thing for the entire community. So please, I hope that we take this to a vote tonight, and I hope we finish this process this evening and get this over the hump and get this built. Thank you.
Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the last vote we just took means nothing unless we vote these in favor of these. We are mandated, we are mandated by the state to require that property to put to school. They won't give you the money for the school. So they're separated here because of technicality reasons, whatever. And the last one that's on here no one mentions, because it's all three, is the conveyance of the park to the school. Hill Park has to be voted. If you vote against one of these, it's like voting no on the first vote we just took. So it'd be disingenuous to the people of, of the area. And the other thing I wanna say is everybody says the McKinley School, it's Ward Four. A lot of people from Ward One, from the Immaculate Area Conception, which is Ward One, go to that school. Also, Ward Five a lot go. So it's, it's more than just a Ward Four issue. But just wanna make note, if we don't vote for the next three, it's like voting no on the last vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zimbudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. Everybody's pretty much said, everything needs to be said, that these next two bonds, the school doesn't get built without them. So if you're, if you're in for a penny, you're in for a pound. We either vote the school and the, the things that make the school work. Without these next two bonds, nothing works. So I'm certainly in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Vice President.
Thank you. For all of you that didn't know, I'm the Chair of Youth Parks and Recreation. So since this won't be going in the committee of the whole, because I'm assuming we're gonna vote on it tonight, I just figured I'd throw my two cents in, which is obviously in favor of it. But I do have to say, I am sad that we're gonna lose Hill Park. I think that a lot of people that grew up in the city, you know, there are a lot of memories there, too. But I think that building a school there is a great tribute to the memories because it's gonna be contributing to thousands of new memories that can be made in that building. And I hope that in the new development, and hopefully, if some of these older buildings are knocked down, we can find new land, other than St. Mary's. But I am glad that you guys are happy with St. Mary's being used for this purpose and that there wasn't a lot of problems with that. And the baseball team was my big concern, so I'm glad that you guys are comfortable with that and it's not gonna affect your schedules. So I'm all for it, and I'm glad it worked out this way. Thank you.
Counselor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm prepared to vote for the whole package. It's inconsistent with the, with the school. As far as Counsel Janino says, I was originally for the Hill Park, and it's still, the name is still gonna be there on the building for the Hill family. And hopefully, it'll be a nice park for Ward Six and for the entire city. So I'm prepared to vote the entire package. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Orego.
Thank you, Mr. President. I spent the better part of my childhood playing baseball down St. Mary's. And I can tell you from the black eyes that I got from bad hops that, playing second base, that we, we need a new facility down there. But I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't have a question. So one thing that I am wondering about is the environmental study that was supposed to be done on that land. And I, I don't know if it's been done yet. I just wonder if, if it's been done.
The question is, was there an environmental study done at the St. Mary's property?
Is, there was a need to do an environmental study, though, right? Okay. Because that property, if I'm not mistaken, is part of the problem that we've had with our consent decree with the creek that runs back there. And I am worried about there being some problems with, in the environment, with the soil, and us kind of uncovering a, a money pit. And it end up, and it, and it end up costing, you know, the taxpayer more money. So that's one thing that I, I know we need to have done, and I'd like to, you know, see it done or have a, have a promise that it'll be done. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Hass.
Thank you. You know, Brian brought up an issue we had spoken about in the past. Some of that land, I believe, could be contaminated, without question. We all look at the culvert back there, which greatly needs to be repaired to alleviate the flooding on the various streets down there. I think that, well, I believe that by making this investment there and relocating the Hill Park up to the ballfield area, I mean, I'm up there all the time. I have two of my grandchildren. They play T-ball up there. And I think that the improvement would be great. It'd be great for the kids, it'd be great for, actually, for the citizens because we can actually showcase a beautiful three-field complex. And I'm, I look forward to voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I know the feeling is to vote for it. I would like to make an amendment to this proposed bond loan order that we remove 40 Foster Street from the package and reduce the $3 million to $2,500,000. Okay. I'm making. I'm gonna ask. Vote on the amendment.
Mr. President, just to clarify, are we voting on the amendment first? If that goes down, then we vote on what's in front of us?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. On the amendments to remove 40 Foster-
Mr. President, can we, can we get a sense from either the superintendent or-
I can't hear you, sir.
Can we get a sense from the superintendent or the mayor that whether or not we need 40 Foster Street?
That's, that has nothing to do with the school directly. It has to do with the renovations of the, the McKinley School.
I'd still like to hear it from the mayor.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, I, I understand your concern about 40 Foster Street, but you're budgeting $500,000 for that. That, that, I think, is an unfair number for that piece of property.
Do you think it's too, too high?
I think it's way too high.
Okay.
I think it's way too high. I mean, you know, to me, you know, listen, we're only gonna spend the money that we need to spend. But, you know, right now, as you know, with takings, you know, it's not just take it or leave it. You know, we've already had a couple people that have talked about potential lawsuits. We may need to have to, you know, reach some sort of settlements with people. So we need the, you know, Mayor Hass would, you know, a former Mayor Hass would know this. We need the financial wherewithal to be able to take these properties without having to come back again and ask for more money. I mean, we're only gonna spend what we absolutely need to spend. But, you know, this is, you know, a request that I think is very, very reasonable. And if there is, you know, money left over that at some point in time, you know, is not used, it will not, it will not be, it will not be of any consequence to the taxpayers. So this is-
With all due respect to you, Mr. Mayor, what I will do is ask that 40 Foster Street be removed from the eminent domain and the money's not be touched.
Roll call on the amendment.
Can I, can I, on the amendment, Mr. President?
On the amendment.
On the amendment, Mr. President.
You wanna speak on it, sir?
I do.
I thought a roll call is not debatable.
It is ludicrous to, it's ludicrous to assume that the mayor was going to buy 40 Foster Street if he loses the ability to refurbish the McKinley School, which we've already not voted on tonight, already sent to the committee as a whole, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss. If we approve it at that point, we'll have to put 40 Foster Street back in. That makes no sense. Leave it like it is. He's not gonna spend it if you don't approve. Thank you.
Roll call. I will call roll call on the amendment to remove 40 Foster Street from the list with no change in the finances.
On the motion, Counselor Orego.
No.
No. Counselor Correggio.
No.
No. Counselor Janino.
No.
No. Counselor Ganasso.
No.
No. Counselor Hass. No. Counselor Patch.
No.
No. Counselor Penta.
No.
No. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Reardon.
No.
No. Counselor Zimbudo.
No.
No. And Counsel President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes. The amendment fails.
On the, on the original motion, roll call.
This is on the loan order authorizing the acquisition of certain parcels of land required to construct the Staff Sergeant James J. Hill School and acquire land to be converted into parkland in the amount of $3 million. Counselor Orego.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ganasso.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hass? Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Reardon?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zimbudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. The new bond authorization is approved.
Mr. President.
Counselor Penta.
Are we still under suspension?
Yes, we are, sir.
Can we take a roll call that reconsideration not prevail?
You wanna, is a voice vote, a voice vote fine?
Voice is fine.
All in favor, all opposed of reconsideration, hoping it will not prevail. All in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered. Next hearing.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called is ordered on the-
Excuse me one second, Madam Clerk. I, I have been neglect tonight, and I'm sorry. I wanna recognize a gentleman that I work with for several years, former Ward One Counselor Goodwin, Dougie Goodwin. Thank you very much, sir. Nice seeing you.
Calendar item number-
Go ahead, ma'am.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called is ordered on the proposed bond order to pay the cost of park improvements at the former St. Mary's Ball Field site, once acquired in the amount of $2.1 million.
Proponents, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Once again, this will be the final loan order. And again, just to piggyback on what you just voted on, you, you know, you're giving us the ability to take these properties. Now we need the ability to refurbish these properties. So I'm not sure how much discussion you wanna have on it, but again, these are gonna be first-class fields. And that's one of the things, I think Counselor Penta might have mentioned it, we're trying to think ahead. We, we don't want, we don't wanna look at a city like Everett or Malden or Lynn or Chelsea or anybody. We want them looking at us saying, look at Revere, look what they're doing. That's a first-class community. And that was the goal of this plan right along, is to make us a first-class, knowing the first-class community that we are. And it has been really terrific so far tonight to stand with my colleagues on the City Council, to stand with the Superintendent of the Year in Massachusetts, Paul Dakin. To stand with the members of the school committee that are here, as well as the parents and faculty and administrators. We're all here for one reason, and that's to make Revere the best place it can be, the best place to raise a family and the best, and to provide the best educational and recreational experiences we can for our residents. So I wanna thank you. I have really nothing else to say. This is to refurbish the fields. I'm hopeful that, that you can vote favorably, and that will complete really the main goals of what we were looking for here tonight. I'll be happy to come up at a later date and talk about the, the last loan order for the $2.5 million, which is for the McKinley, once the McKinley is vacated. But I ask for your support on this final loan order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any other proponents? We're still on a hearing. Proponents. Name and address for the record, sir.
Paul Dakin, Superintendent of Schools, in deference to time, but not to diminish the fact that I, I want to put on record the support of us for this. It's equally important in all ways, but I think the message of those that showed up and those that were in the other room has been conveyed. And I thank you for taking this issue to task with this final vote. And more than that, I thank you for helping bridge what a, a vision was started by Bob Hass and Carol Ty, who carried through with Tom Ambrosino and members of this council, passed it on to this mayor to finish that one dream of five schools, but also to start to anchor his new vision of what can be a wild factor for our community. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Mr. Stringie, name and address for the record, please.
Mr. President, Frank Stringie, Director of Planning and Community Development for Audi, Azzamir Road in Winfield. What the council did tonight, or is about to do, is kind of historic. What you did in 2010, you passed an open space and recreation plan. And one of the top priorities was the reconstruction of Hillary Delarussue Stadium. Check that off. You did that. What you're about to do tonight is add three more fields to our inventory. And that was one of the other high priorities in the open space recreation plan, to add more ball fields to our inventory. You're about to do that. What this program will be down there, so you know what you're getting for your $2 million bond, is three new ball fields, new irrigation systems, new dugouts, all new lighting, two new parking lots, and a new concession stand. That is really gonna do a lot for our city youth. Thousands of youth are gonna use those fields, and student athletes, because one of those fields will be utilized by our, our Varsity Girls Softball Team. So I applaud you tonight. You're doing a great thing for the city.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing none, I will close that portion of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents, sir? Name and address for the record, sir.
Excuse me. Rob Sullivan, 11 Barrett Street, Revere. The argument, you know, that's been framed here is either you're for this thing or you're against all of the kids. And that's not really what, what this is about, okay? What this is about is trying to get to the same place, perhaps with a different way of doing it, without disrupting the whole end of Broadway, without taking Hill Park, without moving things to the mosquito-infested, possibly environmentally contaminated St. Mary's, and voting on things that you actually have some information about. I mean, you guys are gonna vote on this thing, and Ms. Janino are gonna vote on this, without having all of the figures, without having all of the impact studies. And so, you know, that's, that's my point. I'm not here to try and deprive the kids of schools or people of softball fields. What I would like to see is a little bit more protection of the taxpayer, because there are people who pay taxes who are just getting by. And those people are working, and they're just getting by. And a lot of people here, I think a lot of people in the school system, don't realize that. They think that there's an open checkbook here that you can just keep writing and writing writing and writing. Some days, someone has to pay the cost of that. You guys are pushing out debt service for years and years. Well, what if some, what if something happens? Now we need some money. We're maxed out with what we can borrow. So you're putting all of your eggs in this basket. It's a big gamble. I happen to disagree with it, but obviously I'm in a distinct minority. Is my two minutes up? That's it.
I'm glad you answered your own question. Any other opponents? Any other opponents? Any other opponents? Where's Michael? Michael still here? I'm going to raise the hands, make it official. For those that haven't spoken, if you are in favor, please raise your hands, both sides, in and out.
100% is the three people over there.
Okay. Is there anybody that hasn't spoken that is opposed? Hearing is seeing none? Any counselors want to speak? Counselor Haas.
I just have one question, you know. If we approve this this evening, and all of a sudden the consultants come in and say there is contaminants, I'm sure what we're bonding is not enough to include that. They would have to come back to City Council for further appropriations, correct? Thank you.
If necessary for a 20-20... Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like I said, this is just part of the school that we voted on. To say that we don't know what the figures are, that's disingenuous, because you do know what the figures are. Are these things an estimate? No one knows exactly. We may not start this for like two years, just starting the park. We don't know exactly, but like the mayor said, and I think, and I hope he went on the high side, because if we don't use the money, it can be paid to pay the bond down, it could be paid for whatever this council sees fit on the mayor's recommendations, or we can just put it back towards the bond and cut it down a few years or whatever. But this is part, not to vote on this, like I said, this is not to vote on the schools. So it's something that we all knew up here, we had a vote on once, we voted for that $42 million. You know, but to say we don't do our homework up here, and everybody knows how many papers you get, I mean, it takes you hours and hours to read them. And we get a lot of them, but I think everybody up here knows that we are thinking of the taxpayer. I've got a large family in this city. My wife has five brothers that live in this city, sisters that live in this city, I've got, I've got brothers that live in this city, huge family. If I thought it wasn't to their advantage, I wouldn't vote on this. But, I mean, you're getting 80% of the construction of the school, you're getting 2.7 man for the stadium. I don't think people realize what we're getting. You have to, you have to weigh things out in the balance act. What we're getting for the money we're paying is astronomical. A lot of cities and towns would envy us for getting that. Counselor Patch mentioned someone in his family had to pay 100% for the school. Now, if we went on longer with this and didn't vote it, who knows next year? Maybe 80% funding is gone. But I think it's responsible, this council is responsible, the mayor, for his vision in getting this done quick, and going after the money and making sure we, we have that money coming in from the state. I mean, it's, it's no question responsible on this council's part, no question at all. And I'm proud of the council. I'm proud of these people that come out to spend three hours here with us tonight in both rooms, not even be in the council chambers. It shows that they care about Revere. And I'm proud to live in Revere with these people.
Counselor Riordan. Thank you, Mr. President. Just by way of perspective, again, I'd like to bring us back to the fact that unfortunately we are not running this show as completely as we'd like to do. Sure, we'd like to have vetted the process 100%, maybe taken a little bit more time, but the problem is, the people who are giving us almost $30 million to do this job said, "Hurry up." When someone gives you $30 million, you've got to hurry up. I'm sure that if there are any obstacles that are in our way, just the same way we overcame the obstacles to get this far, we will overcome them. We have the expertise, we have the people working hard, very, very hard on this. And while, again, there may be a few unanswered questions, I do not believe that there are any serious obstacles out there, and I, even if there are some minor ones, we will get past them, and we have to believe that. As I said at the outset, this is a bold initiative. Bold initiatives don't happen with guarantees, they simply do not, at least not 100%. We've done the best we can to get the guarantees in place. They are in place, and we need to go forward at this point and deal with any problems, any obstacles as we, as we find them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Regarding the park improvements, you know, I'd love to see new parks, but I just have a couple comments to make. Just so you know, I am not going to vote against this, okay? Because I believe in the kids. I've always been a kid person. I've been youth. I was a basketball referee for 35 years. But I just want to state that I have never seen a design on this project, so I'm voting on this in the dark. That's the questions that I would have liked to seen, or had. Show me what we're getting. We have not seen that, or I haven't. If somebody else saw it, they saw it in private. I don't remember seeing it. And, you know, I'm glad for St. Mary's Little League that they'll be getting new fields. I have, I had a problem with the city taking over two additional fields, because we have problems taking care of our other fields. You go down to Curtis Park in my district, since they built the Garfield, the field is a disaster. The city has not taken care of it. From what I see of Frederick's Park down in Beauchamp, it's not the best field, it's not the worst, but that's a huge field. Poor maintenance, and that, and I know it's an in-house thing, but that's, those are the things that bother me. And I have to say that. And, you know, I want to see the new fields, but it just bothers me that we're taking over a new, two new fields and adding another one that I know Hill Park was never taken care of to the greatest content either. But I will vote for this, but I just had to say my piece. Sure, sir. Quickly, if you will.
Pardon me, real quick. On taking care of the fields, if you've been down to St. Mary's or Revere Youth Baseball and Softball, it's probably the two most manicured fields in the entire city. Actually, Chad down there is a field keeper. And, thank you, Chad. And get, when we don't have to pay the St. Mary's Church, and I'm not going to give the amount, but like I said, the, the foot is on the neck, when we don't have to pay the St. Mary's Church, that money will continue to go back into the league and back into the three fields.
I'm not challenging it, sir. I'm not challenging it. I know it's a nice field.
I assure you, from...
I know it's a nice field.
We will take very good...
And I know you did it privately, and you took care of it. I always donated to it whenever you needed something.
Speaking of donations, we have...
Yeah, sure. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have, sponsor lists have all gone out in the last week. I actually, I actually stamped all the envelopes yesterday.
So, thank, thank you. So with that, I will ask for a roll call on this public hearing on the proposed loan order for park improvements.
On the bond order to pay the cost of park improvements at the former St. Mary's Ball Field site, once acquired, in the amount of $2.1 million. Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the bond order has been approved.
We, we still have one more, one more motion that has to be taken up to complete this package.
Mr. President, motion reconsider again.
Reconsideration, you may. All in favor, it's for...
It's not prevail.
All in favor, all opposed, voting so ordered. And may I say, Mr. Mayor, this is not a public hearing for this particular, it was written wrong, incorrectly. Yes, it's only, it's only a vote of the, a motion that's coming up, and, but you may speak on it, sir, of course.
As long as you guys vote for it, I don't want to speak.
This is... Let me, let me say this, Mr. Mayor, to make it official, there's a motion on the floor to transfer a Hill Park to the Revere School Department for the Staff Sergeant James J. Hill School project. That's the motion on the floor. Mr. Mayor, you may speak on it if you wish.
This speaks for itself.
The motion speaks for itself. This is the last motion tonight.
Roll call.
And I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Roll call in an order approving the transfer of land comprising Hill Park to the care, custody, and control of the school department for, for school purposes, including use as the site of the new Staff Sergeant James J. Hill Elementary School, and authorizing the city to petition the General Court for special legislation to approve such transfers. Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Emphatically, yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the special legislation has been approved.
While we're on the suspension, Mr. President.
Five-minute recess.
Mr. President, while we're on the suspension, can we take a vote? Reconsideration or prevail?
There's reconsideration on the floor, Madam Clerk. Reconsideration, hoping it does not prevail. All in favor, all opposed, voting so ordered. Five-minute recess. Okay, gentlemen and ladies, thank you for coming back. We still have some regular business to conduct, and, Madam Clerk...
Calendar item number seven, report of the Public Works Subcommittee.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Subcommittee met this evening at 5:00 PM. There were three items on the agenda. 13-028, petition from Crown Castle NG Inc. for permit to install conduit in fiber locations to existing utility and street poles on Franklin and Walnut Avenue. This was approved unanimously by the Subcommittee. I would now ask for a vote, sir.
Motion to accept the committee report.
On the petition of Crown Castle NG East for conduit and fiber locations on Franklin Avenue and Walnut Avenue, Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Penta. I mean, sorry, Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
The petition has been approved by the City Council.
Mr. President, there were two other items on the agenda.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you. 13-055, motion presented by Counselor Correggio that the mayor requests the DPW Superintendent to appear before the Public Works Subcommittee to examine the guidelines used for hiring plow drivers to include but not limited to truck size, equipment, and operator capability. I have received many complaints about undersized trucks plowing during the previous blizzard, and complaints about damage to parked vehicles. Further, that the flags or signage be used on the city Revere Trucks contractors also for identifying purposes. And the next one was 13-057, motion by myself, Counselor Powers, that the mayor requests the Superintendent of Public Works or his designee to appear before the committee on Public Works on March 11th, 2013, at 5:00 PM to advise the said committee as to what caused the malfunction of the tide gate that services the Eastern County ditch. Further, that the City Council be advised as to what steps need to be taken to prevent any further occurrences of failure of the tide gate in question. Also, that the City Council be advised as to what steps need to be taken to correct the problems in the area of 611-660 Revere Beach Boulevard to prevent raw sewage from backing up into the homes. On, these both I want to have placed on file. The Superintendent of Public Works has agreed to have a contractor look into and give some guidelines to the City Council with regard to what can be done to correct those and what monies will be needed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion to place on file. All in favor, all opposed, voting so ordered.
Calendar item number eight, report of the Appointments Subcommittee.
Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, earlier this afternoon, the Appointments Subcommittee met, and we had the following appointees before us. What I will do, Mr. President, for shortness of time, I will read all of the that have been approved, and I ask that unless there's an exception by any of the counselors, to take them all at once afterward.
Okay.
The reappointment of Lauren De Vella as a constable for the city of Revere. Appointment of Anthony Del Vecchio as a member of the planning board. The reappointments of the Board of Assessors for a three-year term, Mr. John Varingia. Reappointment to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term, Mr. Daniel Bloomstein. Reappointment to the Health Board for a three-year term expiring February 2016, Dr. Eric Wild. The reappointments of the Historical Commission for a three-year term, Mr. Justin Capitalupo and Mr. Jeff Perlman. The reappointments of the Park and Recreation Commission, Ms. Patty Braid. The reappointments of the Planning Board for a three-year term, Mr. John Arigo. The reappointments of the Planning Board for a three-year term, Mr. Paul Mazoni. The reappointments of the Revere Cultural Council for a three-year term expiring 2016, Ms. Rosa Politano, Ms. Annette Bornstein, Ms. Asanta Esposito, Ms. Diane LaClaire, Ms. Babe Wonderlick, and Mr. Thomas Haney. The reappointments of the Revere Residents Employment Monitoring Committee for a two-year term, Mr. Anthony Peroni.
Counsel, just one question on item number five. Counselor Guanasso.
Counselor, number five.
On the Parks Recreation Commission.
Yes, one individual showed and the others didn't, so...
So they're not...
In fairness to those that were in attendance, I think we hold them until the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
On the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso, Counselor Arigo.
Present.
Present. Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Calendar item number nine, communication from Site Plan Review relative to findings and recommendations.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, Mr. President, beg, beg your indulgence, there were three others that came in late that we also met.
Yes, you're correct.
I'm sorry. For reappointment for a licensed drain layer, I Sasso &amp; Sons Construction. For reappointment to a, as a licensed drain layer, Raphael Construction. And reappointment as a licensed drain layer, Geo Research Inc. I ask those to be voted favorably.
On the appointments of the, on the reappointments of the licensed drain layers as reported On the appointments of the, on the reappointments of the licensed drain layers as reported by Chairman Guanasso, Councilor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, the drain layers have been confirmed. Calendar item number nine, communication from Site Plan Review relative to findings and recommendations for the special permit application of 85 Broadway.
Counselor Gino.
Thank you. The only thing I'd like to add to this for the Site Plan Review, after speaking to a few people, it's under my understanding that this property was going to be purchased by another buyer, but they declined it because of contaminated soil. So, if we're going to have a large number of children on this property, I'd like to add that the soil be tested for contaminants.
Yeah, that's fine, but this is going to go to a Subcommittee, right?
Yes, it's still in Subcommittee. We're not voting on this tonight. Because this is in zoning, and we'll attach this to the zoning Subcommittee package.
Okay, this is that-
85 Broadway.
Yeah.
The kids for all kids.
I've got some remarks on that. I'll just hold it for zoning?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Guanasso.
Point of information.
Which point?
Whereas we previously advertised that we had meetings scheduled for the, in reference to the McKinley School.
Right.
Now, do we rescind all those in public, or do we just?
No, the only one we'll have is this coming Wednesday to talk about the renovation of the old McKinley School.
And so, I think it should be noted that the rest have been canceled due to the fact that it was moot.
There was really only two other meetings that would have been involved, two weeks from Wednesday and the one April 11th.
So, now that's a moot question, and it should be resolved that they're no longer-
That's correct.
So, the 27th is canceled?
27th is canceled, and April 11th is canceled.
Thank you, Mr. President.
11th is, yeah.